And good morning to all. We're glad you're here this morning. We will start this morning with our invocation. I'll ask Stephen Sweet, the pastor at the Sierra Vista United Methodist, to come forward and you've got the floor, sir. Good morning, sir.
Would you pause for me? I want a prayer, please. Well, God, as this body politic gathers today to do the business of the people, to lead, to attend to the common good, and hopefully even to do so in a spirit of love of neighbor. As they discuss and deliberate and make decisions, help them one and all to be focused on that which is good and that which is right, erasing them all inclinations of self-serving egos and self-serving agendas. Give these, our leaders, eyes to see real community need and the courage to act accordingly. Give them vision that will enable this community to be a vibrant and joyous place to dwell for local families and friends who will come from afar. Where missteps or faulty decisions have emerged, enable our leaders to deal with them honestly, with repentance and thoughtful redirection. And whenever decisions are made and policies employed with compassion and wisdom and prudence, help them hold fast and not be blown about with every critical wind or judgmental stare. We trust ourselves and our community to divine presence and providential care. And to that, we lift our leaders this day, that they will guide us with good sense and godly goodness. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. And now it is my honor to bring to the front Mr. Robert Stanley, who is a WWII vet, and Bill Murray, who is a Vietnam era. And this will be the West Texas Veterans for Veterans, representing all veterans. And they will assist us this morning in our pledge of allegiance. So, welcome, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stanley's not only a WWII veteran, but he had a boot shop in San Angelo and built boots for this area for a long time. He's a wonderful person there. Okay, now it's the time for some proclamations. And the first one that we will recognize today will be Dolores Swartner, with the West Texas RSVP director. And we will recognize RSVP Volunteer Recognition Day. Good morning, Dolores. How are you? Please allow me to read this. It says, "Whereas West Texas RSVP volunteers wears many hats during their volunteer service, providing a spirit of helping that multiplies in value as each RSVP volunteer reaches out to serve another. And whereas RSVP volunteers have become a vital and a positive force throughout the Concho Valley, demonstrating a common conviction that clarity and social responsibility manifest all that is good. And whereas the West Texas RSVP sponsored by the West Texas Rehabilitation Center will honor, recognize, and celebrate the powerful contributions and impact that RSVP volunteers make solving problems, meeting community needs, and providing a model for lifelong service in San Angelo and across the Concho Valley. And whereas this recognition reinforces the message that service by older adults benefit all involved, it helps RSVP volunteers by keeping them active, healthy, and engaged. It helps our communities and nonprofits by utilizing the skill of the service of skilled volunteers, and it strengthens civil participation. And whereas RSVPs are vital to our future as a caring and productive community and nation as they unselfishly share their time, talents, and life experiences with others. Now therefore I, Duane Morrison, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September 5, 2013, as RSVP Volunteer Recognition Day in the Concho Valley, and urge everyone to join us and recognize these special volunteers who through their service remind each of us how volunteer work can expand opportunity not only to those in need, but also for those who give." Thank you, Dolores. Now we need a speech.
How about a short one? For those that have seen me around a while, I used to talk about Concho Valley RSVP and you heard today, West Texas RSVP. Well, the West Texas Rehab has sponsored the RSVP program in Abblane for 40 years and here in San Angelo for 32 years. And as of July of this year, those two programs were merged. So we're now the West Texas RSVP, and I operate an office here in San Angelo and in Abblane. And this year, we're going to be honored to have Congressman Mike Conaway address the volunteers at our luncheon. We're going to be recognizing quite a number of volunteers. Five who are going to receive 4,000-plus Hours Lifetime Service Award. They're joining 103 other volunteers who have already received that award. And one of our volunteers was selected to receive the Governor's Award. And he'll be receiving that next week in Austin, so we'll also be honoring him. So Mayor and Council members, we hope you can join us.
Thank you. We have a recognition now to a very special person. Larry Teague, come to the front, please, sir. When I first came on the council in 2003, my predecessor, Royce Buras, had appointed Larry Teague to his board member on the Costa DC Development Corporation. And then when I came on in 13, and for some reason, I had the wisdom to retain Larry as my board member on the Costa DC. And he has been a tremendous board member throughout his tenure. So we have a plaque to give. It is presented to Larry Teague in recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to the City of San Angelo. It's presented by the City of San Angelo Development Corporation. He was on this from February of 1999 until July of 2013. Larry, thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Duane. You want to make a speech? I appreciate it very much. I appreciate the opportunity that I've had. I've made a lot of business and personal acquaintances with the city staff and employees, and I've really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Let Brian take it. And it's nice, not only to recognize someone for service, but to recognize a good friend as well. I thank you, Larry. All right, Fred Hernandez. We have a commendation here for... This is Fred Hernandez. And we will need Community Affairs Manager Randy Wessels, Line Crew Leader Mark Kogle, the line mechanic. If y'all would come forward, have a little recognition for y'all. And this is... These are the gentlemen that are responsible for building the pla... Yeah, come up, policeman. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'm sorry, SWAT guys. Those are people you need to get your terms correct with, aren't they? Come on up, gentlemen, so we can be here together. This recognition goes to AEP Texas for their generosity and the willingness to help create the police department's new SWAT obstacle course. And it's to be accepted by Fred Hernandez, the AEP manager of community affairs, Randy Wessels, the line crew leader, Mark Kogle, the line mechanic, and SWAT operators, William Ferris and Chris Chapa. Fred, you want to make a speech?
Not really.
Come make a speech.
Well, this is a... We do appreciate the chance to work with the Police Department SWAT and you, Mr. Hernandez, for all the help you've given us. And I do appreciate... Y'all may not have met Mark Baker. He's our manager of distribution systems. And he's been around here in San Angelo for quite a few years. And Randy and Mark, thank you for your work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Who, anybody else want to make a speech? You want to make a speech, Hernandez?
Good morning, everybody. If you can see the pictures up here, what AEP has done for us has taken us out of the stone ages, really. Our old obstacle course was at our academy. We had a rope tied to a tree. We used a six-foot chain-link fence to get over as a wall. It was about the same distance. But this one, as you can see, is just short of a military-type obstacle course. And so we really wanted to thank AEP for doing this for us. And of course, I've got the guys that were lead on our SWAT team as far as working with AEP, Chris Chapa and William Ferris. And then also our first officer to actually make the entire tryout process. There were six that tried out that day, and Craig Thomason's our first one. And so I want to present them with their coins. These challenge coins you get for making the SWAT team is the first one. So Craig Thomason will get that. And to get these coins, you have to be part of an elite team, okay? So he's going to get that. Chapa and Ferris are not quite at their five-year anniversary for our actual SWAT coin for being on the team for five years. They have to give five years because these don't come easy. And they're getting them prior to the five years because I think they deserve them because of the work they did on this obstacle course. So these guys are going to get that. And of course, for the two guys that were lead for AEP as far as out on the gun range with us, I wanted to present certificates to Mark Kogle. Kogle. And Randy Wessels, just for their appreciation. And then I also wanted to give them challenge coins as well for all the stuff they did for us.
Where do you want to take the picture up here? Just line up back here, please.
Officer Hernandez, can we get the mayor to take that obstacle course also? I think Duane wants to go first.
And here is a commendation. You're not talking about this mayor. I'd have tried it 30 years ago. All right. This is the now, at the part of our meeting that we take public comment. Let me read this. Public comment is section E on our agenda. It says, "The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. On public hearing items, public input will be received on each item immediately following the council discussion and prior to any action on the item. Each member of the public shall make their remarks from the podium and begin by stating their name. Remarks by citizens will be limited to three to five minutes unless waived by a council member for all speaking on that matter. No individual be allowed to speak more than once on any one subject until every citizen wishing to comment has done so." So I open this now up to the public. If anyone desires to speak, has any comments that they want to make, or has any items that they want to discuss or have to put before council, this is your time. Come to the podium and state your business. Obviously, everyone is very satisfied with everything, the way things are running in our city. There is no public comment. So I will now go to the council. Is there any... Any of our council members wish to say anything, have any remarks? Or is there any... Are there any consent agenda items that need to be moved to regular?
Buy me.
Go.
No, I said buy me. Oh, I've been playing too many cards this weekend.
You all right.
Buy me. I can't make the bid.
Anybody else? No comments? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to... I'll move to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second. Okay, Mr. Silas has made the motion. Mr. Vardeman has seconded it. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the public? Any further discussion from council? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Put a 7-0 on that, Ms. Ramirez. Now we have moved to the regular agenda. This will be public hearing and comment. This will be item number six. This is a presentation of the second quarter reports for the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Council and Conventions of Visitor Bureau. Presentation by Vice President for Economic Development, John Dugan, and CVB Vice President Pamela Miller. Come forward, please, sir. You have the floor, Mr. Dugan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm John Dugan. I'm with the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. For those of you who are new to the council and just as a way of introduction, we work as the marketing recruitment arm for the City of San Angelo through contract with Costa DC. I work with businesses throughout the community, as well as businesses outside the community trying to bring them in. And as part of that, we do a quarterly report. The quarterly report that you are receiving today is actually the April through June report. We're always a little behind, but this one apparently got bumped back a couple of times because you guys have been so busy. So that data is all out there and available. You should have the reports as part of that. It will give you kind of a synopsis of some specific items that are being done, some of the advertising that we're doing right now. But what I wanted to do today, because we do have some new members, is to kind of give you an overview of what we're trying to move forward with, what we are seeing immediately within our proximity and what's going on right now. So in order to do that, just to give you an overview of what we're working with, we work very diligently with the strategic plan that was approved last year through council and through Costa DC. There are very specific issues within the strategic plan that we work with and try to maintain direct contact with the target industries we're trying to attract to San Angelo. We are also working very diligently with local businesses. And I'll be frank with you, right now, our focus is moving more toward a lot of what's going on within our local businesses. Energy is a big issue right now, as everybody knows. We are keeping extremely busy just in energy-related companies that are looking at San Angelo. But we're also, on the other side of that, working with the commercial developers and the hotel developers and commercial space, residential, really all aspects of that. We're working on a regional basis with our partners to try to make sure that as a community, we're kind of keeping ahead of what's going on in the energy industry. We know that we are going to have some really good economic boosts from what's going on. But we're also very aware that it's a double-edged sword, and we have to maintain the diversity within our economy in order for long-term success. And that's what we're working diligently to do. We are working... And my assumption is, you have seen the strategic plan. If you have not, those copies are available, and I'm sure the city staff can get those to you. Some of the target industries that we have been working with specifically because of where we are within the region are agriculture, manufacturing. Energy is one of those as well. And then there's services, because we are a regional medical hub as well, and that gives us some opportunities. So those are the types of companies that we're looking at recruiting. As I said, we are reevaluating and have been working with a committee with Costa DC to energize the Business Retention and Expansion Program. Right now, I'm working with three local companies who have been here for a number of years who are having issues with employment and workforce and all of those things directly related with competition out there in the market right now. And what we're trying to do is help them with reevaluation, working through our partnerships to make sure they're understanding what rage weights are going to have to look like, helping with recruiting workforce, those types of things, and making sure that we're doing what they need to be doing. I have a pretty extensive background in banking, so have worked very hard to help from a financing aspect. And we're actually working with two of those companies to help with the financing packages and locating maybe additional funds that are out there and might be available. There are a lot of tax credits available still out there that we're working with. And we're trying to get the right people to the right financial tools as well to make sure that we continue with the diversity that's out there. The other things that we do from that standpoint is work with legislative groups. Phil Neighbors actually fulfills that mostly for the chamber for us, but works with Military Affairs. We are constantly working with our legislators. We're working in Austin. We're trying to make sure that the issues that we're seeing within our community are being addressed by those legislators and are trying to move whatever influence we can with those. I also represent and work with some of our partners outside the community for the City of San Angelo, like the Texas Midwest Community Network and High Ground of Texas. Both are regional groups that allow us to kind of speak with one very large voice in Austin. High Ground represents 66 counties. TMCN represents 22 counties. So it gives us a little bit bigger voice when we all speak in unison. And we're all having the same issues right now and are trying to work toward those. From the standpoint of companies right now, through this documented time, I'd worked with about 10 different companies. Eight of those were energy-related. Two of those, we've actually moved forward with kind of after the fact. It's been since this June cutoff date. But we've got two of those companies that were working on contracts to get into our business park. So we are seeing those opportunities, and things are moving well in that area. We work through all these aspects on a daily basis. The local companies we see as our biggest issue right now, along with Goodfellow. And we want to make sure that we're supporting the local groups. Our feeling is, those companies have already chosen to be here. And if we are going to be incenting and working toward that, we need to be supporting those that are already here, as well as continuing to recruit from outside. And we will continue that effort as well. That being said, I don't want to take up a great deal of your time. You can read through what I've given you. If there are questions that I can answer, that's really what I'm here for.
Questions, council? Thank you, Brother Dugan. Thank you. Good morning, Pamela.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm Pamela Miller, representing the San Angelo Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we had another great quarter. From April through June of this year, we assisted with 19 conventions, meetings, sporting events, or tours with a projected attendance of 17,059 people. Projected room nights, 2,591, with a total economic impact of $5,125,280. I want to point out again this quarter, just like last quarter, for the last two years, we have consistently been at an average days spent at two to two and a half. Well, so far, both quarters this year, we are at three and a half. So that's good for us. Economic impact, I'd like to just point out to new council members on this that where we get that figure is based on the out-of-town attendance that we have at these events. And the number that we use as our daily figure or our overnight figure comes to us from the Governor's Office, the area of Tourism Research. So each year, we get an update on that. That number includes just rooms, gas, and food. So what that means is if they shop in our community, if they have entertainment in our community, it is not in there. So that economic impact figure is actually a pretty soft number with no multipliers involved. Incidentally, I have just received the report from the Governor's Office for 2012 and a report on travel spending, which does include all those things. Airfares, entertainment, everything they might do in your community. We were up 2012 over 2011, 20%, which according to the research department is one of the top growths in that area in the state. So we were, again, glad to hear that. You have all of the backup in your report on what those events are that we assisted with in the economic impact. A few that I would just like to highlight. We had the West Texas USSA here in March. That was approximately 700 room nights. We had the Coaches Clinic in June. And according to the planner, Jerry Vandergriff, who happens to be our CVB Board Chair this year, he had 1,200 paid attendance, which was one of their better years. And that will change by a week on the calendar in future years. Get it a little further away from Father's Day. The boat races did wonderful again this year. Most boats we've had, most top fuel we've had. Continued to get wonderful comments about us being a favorite location on the circuit for the races, in excess of 10,000 people at this year's event. And in June, we also hosted the National Association of Postal Carriers, which was another great event for us. Your budget is attached, and we are within all of our budget numbers. That starts on page 10. As you know, we are now on a budgeted amount of money each year that you approve instead of a percentage as we were in the past. I did look at the numbers as of July in occupancy tax receipts, so the money coming in for the year. And again, we are on a calendar year. And as of July, we were up 30% over last year. On page seven of your packet is the updated Smith Travel Report for June. After 29 consecutive months of being up in both occupancy and average daily rate, or ADR, in May, June, and following this report in July, we are down in occupancy. As of this report, you see we are down 2.5 in June, but yet our year-to-date is still up 9.2. Our average daily rate, however, continues to climb, up 32.5%. In the July report, which I have just received, we are up on average daily rate over 40%. On page eight, I've given you a recap on the sign-in sheets. This is the guest register that's at the visitor center and registration sheets that people have signed in and told us where they're from. In that report, our top city was Midland, followed by Marble Falls and San Antonio. We do have a lot of racers that come from the Marble Falls area, which is one of the reasons we're sure that climbed so much. Following on page nine, this is actually the surveys. And so they've signed in in a guest book. The surveys are where people actually tell us a little bit more about their stay other than just where they're from and why they might be here for what event. And the number-one reason they were here was vacation. Again, two years ago, one and a half years ago, continuously, our top reason was weekend getaway. So people are looking at us a little bit differently. We're followed by weekend getaway and then business travel. Again, business travel is up, but remember, those people don't necessarily stop at the visitor center and certainly don't fill out a survey. We've given you the room night usage for those that told us. Hotel was number one, followed by staying with friends and relatives. And the top eight Texas cities that gave us a survey, Houston was number one, Del Rio number two, and Midland number three. I think it's very interesting. We can prove in our statistics that the people in Del Rio are coming here to shop. It's easier for them to get here than San Antonio. We hear that a lot. So those are our shoppers. How did they hear about us? What made them come here? The number-one reason was our advertising. Number two was our website, followed by a brochure that they received in another visitor center. Where were they from? 59% from Texas, 35% from out of state. I've given you in your packet a sample of just a couple of our advertising pieces. But let me tell you where we did advertise this quarter. In April, we were in Texas Highways, Texas Monthly, the Spring Texas Events Calendar, the Tourism Edition of Texas Town and City, Travel Host Ride Texas, Texas Travel Counselors What's New, and the Spring Texas Vacation Guide, which goes in all major newspapers in Texas and Oklahoma City and hits one time in the spring, in April. Also, an ad in Drag Boat Review. In May, we were in Parents Magazine, Better Homes and Gardens. In May, we were in Parents Magazine, Better Homes and Gardens, Family Circle, Midwest Living, Moore, Family Magazine. And in June, for drag boat races, we had billboards in Abilene, Midland, Odessa, Brownwood, Lubbock, Lano County, and Brady. Every quarter, we had advertising on Facebook and Google Search. Some of the trade shows that we attended this quarter included, in April, the NASC, which is the National Association of Sports Commissions. And that's where we get to meet with sports planners from across the US. And the Texas Travel Counselors Conference, where we meet with all of the Welcome Center employees, AAA offices, and Texas Park and Wildlife offices, and actually get to give them an education on what's new in our community. In May, we attended Fort Stays at Fort Worth, represented San Angelo there and took along our fort, and our cannon even goes along with us. In June, we attended Powwow, which is a big domestic and international tour operator show. I wanted to... Several of you have received my email. You should have all received my email. I'd like to invite you, on September 20th, we will have Scott Jozlove here. He is the president and CEO of the Texas Hotel and Lodging Industry. He is giving us an update on legal use of occupancy tax. A couple of you have RSVP'd to me already on that. Thank you. We would love to have you attend. And if I can answer any questions on this quarterly report.
Mr. Self.
Pamela, I have one.
Okay.
The economic impact number, that $5 million plus, you call it a soft number. Does that mean it could be more or it could be...
Yes. As I explained, that is only the hotel, the meals, and the gas. So if they bought a plane ticket, it isn't in there. If they shopped when they're here, it isn't in there. If they went to see theater when they're here, it's not in there. That does come in in that total travel spending report that comes from the state, and I have just received that. And we'll be releasing those numbers at the tourism luncheon that's coming up this month. That's a nice, clean number. You'll see a lot of, especially chambers, will take that number and use a multiplier of anything from 2 to 3 and 1/2 to 4% to include that. What we like to give you is a very soft, clean number that, again, it comes to us from the governor's office on research and we haven't padded anything, so very soft.
So if I'm from out-of-town and I come eat here or buy gas here, does it... Is there a way that it tracks me that I'm from out-of-town or it doesn't, or just all lump-sum numbers?
Well, it is lump-sum numbers. That's part of our education right now to a lot of the meeting planners because frankly, we're getting a lot of complaints about our hotel rates. And Mayor, I know you were copied on several of those letters that I received.
Yes, ma'am.
We try to show the big picture. We are cheaper on food. We're very reasonable on retail. You go to somewhere like San Antonio now and you have to pay a valet charge of $25 to $35 a night on top. So even though, yes, those rates are high, when you look at us as a good package, San Angelo's a great place to come. And we do try to push that. But these numbers are not inflated whatsoever.
So they could easily be higher than that?
Yes. It would definitely be higher, I would say. Yes.
Thank you.
Because, you know, nobody's going to come here, and I wouldn't think, and not buy a thing. And as I said, that Del Rio group, they come here to shop. Any other questions?
That's it. Ms. Farmer.
I have a question, and I noticed that Mr. Dugan left, and I was waiting for the whole report before I asked the question, but maybe you know or someone else knows. It says the economic development contract with the city was approved by council this quarter. I don't recall that. Can someone brief me or update when council approved that? I don't even recall seeing the contract.
I don't know if Phil can address that or not. I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
The CVB contract, I don't know if it was this quarter. It may be this... That may be a correct statement if we're a little late on this report, but we did just renew that CVB contract in the last year or so.
She said economic development.
The contract with...
The economic development contract with the city, it says, was approved by council this quarter. I do know that it expired July 31st, but I do not recall council seeing it and approving it.
I don't think that's come back yet.
It didn't.
I think you're right, Ms. Farmer, that that hasn't come back yet. That'd be a contract between COSA DC and the chamber, and I think Bob is still working on that. Isn't that funded by COSA DC?
I'm wondering what they're saying, that the city council approved this quarter. So if you could find that out, I'd appreciate it, preferably today.
You want the answer today?
Well, if Mr. Dugan comes back in, if you could ask him...
I'd be glad to ask John to get that answer.
Bob Sheneman can give us a status report on that, but I think Bob's working on multiple contracts associated with COSA DC and...
Any other questions for the CVB before I...
Council?
Thank you, Pamela.
I'm sorry, I was sort of caught in the stairway when the question came up. I believe it was a question about the current-year contract with the chamber?
The economic development contract with the city was approved by council. This quarter is the statement in this report. And I do not recall seeing...
Yes, ma'am.
...the economic development contract. So I'm asking you...
Oh, it was the fiscal year 2012 contract was just approved this quarter by council. It was on the consent agenda.
I'll get a...
I can go back and find the date if you like.
Clarification from the city manager later.
You're working on the new contracts?
We're working on new contracts now for everybody, right? That'll be effective the 1st of October.
Okay. In the handbooks that you gave us...
Yes, ma'am.
And it was marked, and Nora was kind enough to put, you know, "out for signatures" or "in progress," and I believe this contract expired July 31st. But I didn't bring my book, so I'll get with the city manager.
Okay, but it should have expired September, the end of September. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Do we have any comments from the public on these? All right. I have a couple of requests and I need some guidance from council here. I know that we have people in the audience that are dealing with item number seven. I know that we have people here that are here for item number 14. Do we have anyone that is here to deal with item number eight? That would be Ephraim and Luffy Puente. Is there anyone here for item number nine, Baptist Memorial? Is there anyone here for item number 10, which is a zone change for meals development? I would ask council if we could. I would like to take items number 11, number 12, and number 13 and move these to the end of the agenda because these all have to do with budget and the city employees are going to be here anyway. And I would like to go ahead and start and get number seven and then move to number 14 and then get number eight, nine, and 10. Will council approve this? Do I have consensus? Don?
Yes, sir.
Charlie? Johnny?
No.
Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? All right. Let's go ahead then. We will move the budget items to the end and we will go ahead with item number seven and then we'll go to item number 14 and then we'll pick up the zone changes. Item number seven is consideration of approving a special recreational lease agreement with MK Allen Enterprises Incorporated, a Texas corporation, for 9.77 acres of land located adjacent to the Concho River and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. This is requested by council member Self and Mr. Dixon. You have the floor, sir.
Good morning. Thank you. As Mayor just read, this is a consideration of special recreational lease for Allen Temple, president of MK Allen Enterprises, the owner of the adjacent property and desires to enter into a new special recreational lease agreement. This property has not been leased by the previous...
Hey, Ricky, speak into the mic. Are a little louder one of the two, please.
Yes, sorry. This property has not been leased by the previous property owners. The lease fee will be $569 per year as computed on Exhibit B. I would like to take just a moment. I have the lease agreement with me. I just want to point out a couple of items on the lease. And we can go further in the lease if you need to, but... Section B, the tenant agrees to use the leased premises for any purposes other than the permitted use, including that. No improvements or construction work, including but not limited to living quarters, buildings, pump houses, water wells, storage buildings, excavation fields, or other types of structures or improvements shall be built or placed on the leased premises. No storage of personal property shall be permitted on the leased premises, including but not limited to equipment, machinery, motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, campers, trailers, appliances, temporary electrical wiring materials, or supplies. Goes in further and says they cannot alter the leased premises, including clearing new roads or locating on leased premises any type of manufactured housing or mobile home, removing or destroying any live trees from leased premises without first obtaining permission from the landlord. They are not allowed to hunt on the leased premises or allow anyone else to, or leave litter, or leave trash, or debris on the leased premises. It further goes on and states that the tenant may, upon receipt of an annual water use permit from the landlord as provided, in the city of San Angelo Code of Ordinances, use water from the lake or river for domestic purposes and watering of existing trees and shrubs, but no water is to removed from or transported off the leased premises. Use of water for irrigation expressly prohibited. Tenant shall use water in a conservative manner, taking any drought conditions into consideration. That's kind of the highlights of the agreement where most of the concerns seem to stem from. So with that, I'll take any questions anybody might have.
Mr. Wardle?
Yes, Mr. Dixon, I have a number of questions. We're talking about 9.77 acres of land, are we not?
Yes, sir.
And it's on the river?
Yes, sir.
And I understand it has over 1,000 feet of river frontage. Can you confirm that?
Give me just a minute. I'll look and see what it was figured. It says 1,009 feet of river frontage.
All right. And this particular property is a little bit unique, is it not, in that the access road from the loop comes down to the edge of this property, does it not?
I believe that's correct.
Yes. Do you or the city have a recommendation as to this item? Are you taking a neutral position at this time?
I have no concerns with the granting of this recreational lease. We do this for others along the river, so I see no difference.
Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Dixon, that this is a valuable piece of property that's really a rare jewel for the city of San Angelo in that it has all this river frontage and it has access that the public could use?
That's correct.
And so why wouldn't it be better for the citizens of this town to have this dedicated, just a little park where people could fish, take their children and grandchildren down there, launch some boats, small boats like canoes and little flat-bottom bass boats similar to what they do in Austin in Town Lake? Wouldn't that be a good use for this property?
I'm sure it would.
All right. And you say this is for recreation and it's requested by MK Allen Enterprises, Inc., a Texas corporation. Now, this is going to be incident to their commercial operations, is it not, going to be utilized? It's not really recreational.
I cannot answer that question.
Well, what kind of boating and fishing can a Texas corporation do? They're not individuals.
I'm not sure.
Well, you're not sure... You haven't even thought whether or not this property is going to be used by the developer for his clients? What else would he use it for?
I guess in case they wanted to go sit down on the river and look at the river.
I believe the proponents are here, aren't they?
They are.
They can speak for themselves. They can speak to them, Mr. Wardle.
I'm just asking what goes into his train of thought. And where did you come up with this price of $569, which I believe is actually a little high for the... What is the annual rental?
9.77 acres times $12 an acre is $117. The recreational fee is set by ordinances $200. The river frontage fee is 1,009 feet times 25 cents per foot at $252. It's a total annual fee of $569.
$12 an acre? Do you think... Where did that figure come from? Is that something...
This is the standard fees that have been used on all recreational leases of this type.
Right. And so you did not have any kind of reappraisal as to what the fair market value of a lease with this property would be, did you?
I did not.
All right. And are you aware that $12 an acre is about what the going rate is for agricultural leases on Osari ranch land around here without any valuable river frontage?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Yeah. Would it surprise you if that's what it was?
Okay.
All right. So we're asking the citizens to give up this property and the use of this valuable property that Midland, Odessa, and Abilene would die for, for $12 an acre per year, taking what use away from the citizens. I think this would be a terrible injustice to the citizens of this town.
Have we leased other land along that property?
Yes, sir.
Property along the river?
There's one little piece that's right adjacent. I think it's for a little over two acres or something. It's not been leased, but the remainder of that stretch, there's 80-point-something acres that is leased by the Butler Farms Homeowners Association for the rest of that area along the river there that upsets their properties.
Okay. I guess, I don't know if Carl's here, I guess my concern is, or my question is, if it's such a good place for a park, how come we haven't developed it for our citizens already? And I understand that's the going rate, just for... We've leased all the other ones at the same, basically, the same rate?
That's correct.
Okay.
This particular spot, to me, is a prime piece of real estate that the city owns. For those... We don't have a map or anything, but it's right there on the loop, Loop 306, at the river between...
Foster Road.
Thank you. Foster Road, and it's a beautiful place. If you've ever been down there, the bird watching in the area, it's a nature lover's dream. And with respect to... No, we have never leased this area before. And when this came up, before the old council went out, when we were talking about that particular section of land, the proponents here pulled their application at that time and we didn't get to discuss it. But what prompted then to me is we had been looking, the city has been looking for a perfect place for a dog park, for nature lovers and that we could put little money into, but it would be a designated park, dog park, and putting in a few picnic tables and having set hours. And the reason having set hours is because there are residents, you know, close by with reference to the Butler Farms and across the river and on the inside of the river as well. But it is an ideal place to use some of our native rock, any river monies that we may have left for bank improvement of a smaller area to allow launching of canoes, family-oriented people to let their dogs run, jump in the water. It's just an excellent place that I've had in mind for a dog park, but we've just not got to that area yet. And I would rather see us reserve and hold that piece of land for something that has been requested for a number of years from the citizens of San Angelo. It's... It should be, to me, their use is considered first before we give it up for out-of-town commercial businesses.
Mr. Fleming?
This area is in my district and Ms. Farmer has really hit the nail on the head on this. This is one of the most valuable pieces of property that the city owns inside of the city limits. And I think that giving it away for $12 an acre, I think the citizens would just hang us from the tallest tree in town. This is ridiculous. First of all, we need to postpone this and I think we need to work on the rates. I understand that the rates are set by the city for all these landowners and we talked about this... about this time, not too long ago, about even the lake leases. All these leases are way too low. They all need to be adjusted and be brought up to fair market value. Giving something away for $12 an acre, I just can't imagine that we would ever do that. And this one is a little bit different than the Butler Farms area, because the Butler Farms area is pretty much all landlocked, and you have to go through someone's property to get to it. This one actually has access to the loop, a major road, that we could go down there and we could do the park on. The other ones, we could, really the other areas, we wouldn't be able to do that. So this is something I think that would be an excellent thing, and we may not have the money and the budget to do it soon, but we should hold on to this and keep our most valuable assets close to us so that we can use them in the future for our kids and our grandkids.
Mr. Silas?
Mr. Mayor, I was just waiting to hear from folks on this council, because I am really interested in hearing what the proponents have to add. I'm still undecided, but again, I'm kind of leaning one way, I'm not going to say which way. I'd like to hear from them first, to see what they have to add.
Mr. Wardlaw, you've not said anything. Do you have anything to say, sir?
Well, I would like to hear from the leasers also. I agree with the rate on it, to me, being way low, but by the same opinion that we need to be consistent with what we do and how we do it. I think if, you know, the council winds up looking at these leases, we need to look at all of them that we're doing.
Mr. Valenzuela, do you have a comment before we bring the proponents up?
I do have a comment. What Mr. Fleming just stated is pretty accurate. What we'll be doing, of course, is reviewing the fees. This is something that's coming up here in October. I do agree that there's certain fees that are way too low at this point. I know that these are standard fees, and I definitely can understand as far as making sure that we get what we have coming to us. I know that there was a concern as far as the number of parks and how we can maintain those parks. Those things have to be taken into consideration also moving forward. But as far as the rates themselves, I do agree that they're low, and these are rates that do need to be adjusted. They will be reviewed also.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I make one more comment? I'd just like to reiterate one thing that Mr. Fleming and Ms. Farmer said better than I. This is a unique piece of property. It is the most valuable property probably we have left in the city of San Angelo. It's in the widest stretch of the river. It's in the most beautiful stretch of the river, and it has access. These other properties that have been leased to the adjoining landowners do not have access to the property, and that's how you can justify leasing some of the river frontage to these people up or down the stream from this, because there's no access for the public. But this is entirely different situation, and we should never let this property get away from us. And, you know, the fact, the situation is not comparable to the others that are being mentioned. It's just a totally different situation, and now's the time to take inventory of our properties and do what's right, and we can maintain a low maintenance park there and allow people to go in there and fish and picnic and do all this kind of stuff, and we should never give this property away. It would be a tragic mistake to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I move for a motion? Or do you want to hear the people first?
Let's hear it. We've got two council members that have asked to listen to the proponents, and I'd like to listen to them as well. So someone out there with M.K. Allen Enterprises, would you like to come up and talk to us about this? I'll ask you to identify yourself, and then you have the floor, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Mike Walters. I'm the Operations Manager for M.K. Allen Enterprises. That property was purchased by the corporation. We looked at a lot of different properties in San Angelo, and we came back to that property because of its unique layout. Number one, good access. Number two, it was zoned both commercial and R&amp;E, and that is our plans to develop it as such. I think Councilman Wardlaw referred to, well, what's a corporation going to do with it? Well, Councilman, we kept the property, some property down on the R&amp;E that we designated to build our own personal homes down there. So we do like to have part of that river. As far as the park and everything that you guys are talking about, I think that's a great idea. But right now, that property is in total disarray, like talking to one of the law enforcement officials here in San Angelo. It's, right now, it's undesirables are down there, transients, homeless people. We found drug paraphernalia down there and those things. The property hadn't been cleaned up, and it's also, it's a detriment in the shape it is to the property rights, I mean, to the property values of the owners around it. You said that it had unique access, the property directly across the river from us. It has access also to any of those properties right there on the loop, on the four corners you can access. Most of the boats that go in the water down there, Mr. Wardlaw, they go in the water through the DOT right away across the river from us, and there are people down there fishing regularly. We have no desire to take that property and do something with it. We just want to clean it up and make it a desirable piece of property. And in the shape that it's in right now, it really doesn't lend to the type of, what the city wants to portray themselves as. I think that we're willing to clean it up and use it and put it in a very good working order at our expense and to lease it from you guys.
Any council questions?
I have a question slash comment.
Go ahead, John.
My question is, the caption reads, "Special recreational lease." So what recreation, how does that fall into your...
I didn't write the caption. I don't know. I would always heard it as referred to as a grazing lease. So recreational lease, I like to fish. I was down there the other day. There was a guy down there fishing. He caught a nine-and-a-half-pound black bass. You know, I like to fish. You know, and anybody here, this is West Texas, we all know it, and anybody here that owns property, that they can get rights and permission to waterfront property, everybody wants it. Everybody desires it. So we desire it also, as you've given it to other people in the past.
And you're saying you want to clean it up, and would you then maybe allow access from the public to go out there and fish if you made it?
Well, they have access. They could come down through the DOT right away and fish that river. If you look at that riverbank, that riverbank is eroded. It's probably six to seven foot in most places to the water. There's only one small spot down on the south side of that property that you can even walk down to the water, and you've got to be careful doing that.
You're right, everybody wants it. We're a retirement community, as well as a growing community. We have a number of retirees who like to fish. They're not able to get out to the lake or the private properties that are out there. And this area with minimum work, yes, it needs to be mowed and cleaned up, but we've been doing riverbank improvements in our city. It's taken us a little while longer because we've been doing it in-house with some very capable rock folks. I'm confident that with a little planning, just as soon as our guys have got some breathers, that they can make a very nice public area from this with limited hours of use. They can be posted, the lighting is there, the road is there. I just do not want to give up that prime real estate to an out-of-town company when the people in San Angelo deserve it first. And we're a little slow in developing it, but it is a prime spot, and the other places that you're talking about are leased to private San Angelo citizens or homeowners associations. And I'm just, for one, I'm not willing to give it up. It's just a prime spot.
Ms. Farmer, I am a San Angelo citizen. High school, college, I am local.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm referring to your special recreation lease agreement, which leased it, show your address is Fredericksburg in the street. So that's what I have to go on.
Okay. Mr. Fleming?
Mr. Walters, just for the record, the adjoining property that you guys do currently own right now, what are you going to put in there?
The only thing we can put in, commercial or R&amp;E, that's all there's, what are we going to put in there? We don't know. We haven't had an offer for that property. We did look at an RV park one time. I know what you're referring to, but the fact of the matter is, that's been tabled. That's no longer on the board. But as business people, we have to go on and make that property viable.
So were you saying in front of this council that it will never be an RV park?
I'm never going to say never about anything.
Any other comments, council?
I move to deny the request.
We have a motion to deny the request. Is there a second?
I second that.
We have a motion to deny, we have a motion to second. I will take public comment now. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak to this, come up, Mr. Allen. Identify yourself, and you have the floor, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council, members of staff. My name is Sam Allen. I'm here in my capacity as an attorney representing the Butler Farms Homeowners Association. As the council's aware, there's a number of families that live near this location and have been trying to stay informed about the status of this particular piece of property. And one of the comments that Mr. Dixon made when he made the presentation is, is that all things being equal, normally a lake, a river lease like this goes to the adjoining landowner. The point here is that this is not a situation where all things are equal. We're in a time of transition. The proposed use, at least the last one that we knew of for the acreage, was, in fact, to put in 195 RV spaces. Until Mr. Walters made his statement earlier, I thought that was indeed the continued intent, and in fact, they've not left open, they've not closed the door on the possibility of going forward with that development. Now, the city has gotten a group of people together to try to figure out a policy for development such as this. There's zoning, planning, other procedures that go through before the final use is either approved or not. An RV park does not match the current zoning for the property. My position is, is that this is not normal circumstances, and that it would seem to me that the thing to do would be to wait on this part of the land use until the rest of the use is in fact stated and approved and has gone through the proper channels. That seems to be the mode of consistency and the most efficient approach to this, especially when you know two things, that the lease provides for some use of water, it may be undefined in some respects, and also, it's only for private use, which 195 RV spots would seem to strain that definition. The lease is not going to anybody else without this council's permission at this point in time, and there's nothing keeping anybody from going down there and cleaning it up. I think that being identified, I would expect the city will give a view towards doing that. But the council is taking a risk that could affect folks that have invested a lot of money and a lot of time in following what are currently the comprehensive zoning and land use regulations for the area, and have a vested interest in making sure that they are maintained and followed. There's been development out on the property, some fences cut, brush cut, a lot of things are going on down there. This is one other thing, and what we would fear would be at some future time, someone would expect, well, they've invested all this time and money. Gosh, that would be a factor towards making some kind of special use permit that wouldn't otherwise be granted. When you purchase a piece of property, the zoning is something that you inspect, and your ability to change that is considered before you acquire the property. So what I would, on behalf of the adjacent owners, the homeowners association, we would simply ask the council to hold off on this or any other development there until the policy's been established and proper channels have been negotiated, so that the use of this property is known and where necessary disclosed.
Thank you, Sam.
I got a question for Sam.
Yeah.
Sam, on the other three properties that are on the other three corners right there on the loop, those other three properties are all residential, right?
Well, I didn't study the map before I came here, but I don't know of any other use that is not residential.
So, Sam, it's your recommendation and Butler Farms' recommendation that we don't do anything with that property until such time that y'all say it's okay, or?
Well, it's our understanding that the city, both this council and the folks that have, on staff, and the citizens who've been in panel as a committee, are working towards a process of putting together a comprehensive system and set of rules and guidelines to figure out what you do when somebody wants to put RV spaces in an R&amp;E place like this. So we were hoping that that process would go through so we could find the rules of the game and then make our public comment and make our positions known in the process.
Okay, but if the park is commercial, if the owner should come down and file to put a piece of commercial business there, I guess, does he wait till he gets y'all's permission, or, I mean, I'm just...
Okay. The part that we're concerned about is the ranching estates, zoned area. There's been a special use permit filed and withdrawn in the seek to make that into an RV park. The commercial strip that's against Loop 306, when we bought in, it was zoned commercial. We know what that means, and we know what to expect there. So this focuses more on the ranching estates section that's between the commercial strip and that portion that has been sold to the River Valley folks.
Okay. So the commercial end of it, really, it's just the RV that's the problem?
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Don?
I'm going to vote against this because, once again, I think we need to be consistent. I think when people lease areas, they look at the background and what's happened before. I'm not necessarily for an RV park in that position, but like I said, I think if we're going to look at this for, you know, a different use, that sort of thing, as these other leases come up, I think we need to look at them definitely for an increase and being able to work through attrition and take a look at each one of these leases.
Bobby?
And I ask for it to be put on the agenda, and I think we own the people along those. As far as I know, we've never voted one down. There's got to be some amount of equality. If they came up today and proposed and we voted on an RV park, I would definitely vote against it there. That's the wrong place for that, but I don't think one has anything to do with the other, so.
Mr. Walters, it's not looking good for you, buddy. If we make the motion to deny this and we deny it, you've got one year before you can even bring this back. Kind of what I'm understanding from the council is that we studied this a little bit, we looked at some leases, we looked at some usages, and we get some clarification on these RVs. If you want to pull this thing right now, we can pull it, but if we take...
No motions on the table.
We have a motion.
Motion's on the table.
Yeah. I think that...
Point of order, we need to vote on the motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have to vote on it.
You're right. Sorry, too late. The motion has been made. If you want to pull it, if you can convince them to pull their motion and their second and let us look at this a little bit, this is your opportunity, but if they don't want to pull it, we're going to vote on it.
It will take a year to look at doing anything that I had talked about doing. It's going to take a year.
I'd leave it on there, Mike.
So I'm going to...
I'm going to pull it.
It's up to you, sir.
Will you allow me to pull it?
No, sir. It's going to take a year for us to do what, you know, we want to do, and it's going to take approximately a year more likely for you to develop out your commercial part of That's going to go by pretty fast, but I'm not willing to pull my motion at this time.
We've got a motion on the floor that we deny the request. We have a second, and now I guess it's time we take a vote. Jim, you want to talk to it, Turner?
Yes, my name is Jim Turner. While we're looking at this property and we're looking at it as a possibility of a park, one of the things... park, one of the things you need to do, and it's something that we have problems with on all of our parks in town, is parks are not free. Even once you get them developed, there's ongoing maintenance and construction and policing and other things that are involved. And if you're going to make this into a park, you need to find a good revenue stream for it. And what you might want to do while you're looking at the piece structures for this whole riverfront area, is dedicate part of that fund that comes in from those riverfront leases to developing and maintaining the park there, if you're going to do that. But otherwise, if you take a look historically, we have had a real problem. We have built parks and haven't taken care of them because there's been no money. It sounds great when you cut the ribbon, but five years later, when you have to raise property taxes in order to keep this going, people get really upset. Thank you.
I guess you want to speak to it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is William Derek Darby. I'm the attorney that represents MK Allen Enterprises. All I would like to add is the precedent that this may set for future landowners that own property adjoining to the Concho River or maybe even Lake Nazworthy, that we all respect private property rights, and I'm a huge proponent of private property rights, and complying with reasonable development of property that people own within the current confines. And I think that my clients have submitted in the past ideas and speculation on what they would like to do with this property, but if the market dictates other things and if the council dictates other things under the current zoning and use requirements, then we will gladly comply with the rules that are set forth. We just wanted to have fair and equal treatment, just as any other property owner would have in the city of San Angelo. It is a growing time in the city of San Angelo. I myself, a longtime resident, recently returned as a resident. We think that, I know that it's a good place to raise a family, and I want to see, just as Councilperson Farmer suggested, more parks, more recreation. I have two, soon to be three, young children that love to fish and boat, and we would like properties like this to be developed, cleaned up for the public's access. But I think that private property rights, if somebody buys property, spends their hard-earned money on property, and would like to reasonably develop that property within the current confines, and this is just an ancillary piece to that, I think that the city needs to take that into account before denying this motion for the residential lease.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I came in here today on the fence on this. I can see, I can see pros and I can see cons. And if we had a lake full of water, I'd probably vote for this. But since that river is so dry and you can run up and down that Concho and everybody along, there's got a hose in that river and they're sucking that river, I don't want anybody else pulling out of that river. I don't want to make it available for people to pull out of that river. And I know that this is in the lease, that it will not be done, but I also am, I wake up in the middle of the night worrying about our water problems around here. So, that said?
I think if that's your major concern, I, I think the homeowners of Butler Farms secure that pretty much. I think they make sure that, they keep a close enough eye that, that they make sure there's nothing done there, down there. So I, I think they can rest your ease on that themselves.
So you say that's a, mine is a moot point?
Yes.
He's saying you can sleep better.
The motion has been made. I would rather see it be pulled, would not have to deal with this, but that is not to be. So I'm gonna call for the, call for the vote. All of those in favor of denying, say aye.
Aye.
Hold your hands up. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. It's four, three to deny. Let's take about a five or 10-minute break, please. 10:39. Let's get started again. Let's go to item number 14, if council approves this, and let's go ahead and get this out of the way while we have people waiting. Item number 14 is discussion and seeking direction of the city council relating to the authorization for the operation of golf carts on all or part of public highways within the city as permitted by law. This has been requested by Councilman Vardeman, and we will have a presentation by the police department representative. So, Tim?
You playing golf these days?
Good morning, sir.
Morning. I'm really not sure what, what Mr. Vardeman would like for me to present to you.
Well, what, the way this thing started out is, I know ASU has requested that, that they be able to do that, and what I was trying to do is to get a resolution or, or something to where the way that they are, are so spread out, we can kind of look at it, make sure that it's done safely, make sure that it's done in accordance as much as we can, of course, with the, the law, or if we need to change something in ordinance, then we can look at that. But my, my original one was, was strictly for ASU.
I think that when we, you know, this is a very sticky situation. I would recommend that we look at it from an ordinance perspective so that we have the ability to enforce violations of the ordinance in case someone is not following, following the ordinance as prescribed, the golf cart ordinance or whatever. I will say that as an organization, you know, public safety is, is first and foremost for us, and we don't want to just give everyone in the, in the community the ability to operate a golf cart on the public roadway. We, we want to do everything we can to avoid that. So, you know, there's other entities in our community that have, have utilized the function of a golf cart in, in furtherance of their, their business, and they too have been cited at one point or another, but I'm sure that they would like to see some type of ordinance for them as well. So we are open to suggestions, and I'm here, and so is Sergeant Kennedy, who is familiar with the entirety of the law, and to answer any questions that we may be able to answer for you.
If we can, can we get Joe Munoz for ASU to come up and kind of address that?
Do we want to let, is there any other further counsel on this before we bring Joe up? Johnny?
Don, I'm looking at this map that was just handed to me. Are we talking about these red lines? Is that where they would travel? Or what are the red lines or boundaries, or?
The, well, Joe can probably address that better than I also.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One quick comment.
Turn your mic on.
It is on. I see golf carts out there all the time and across St. Johnson Street. I guess, maybe they're not driving on the streets very much, but there are golf carts all over that place right now, and so I don't know, I don't know how they're handling that.
Mr. Fleming, did you have anything to add about Southland?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Munoz?
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning. And thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to speak. This, this did start out just trying to get permission. We were cited, by the way, and that's what kind of kicked them all down the road a little bit, but that was a good thing, because a lot of good things have come from this, in that we realized that we did not have permission or an ordinance or a resolution from the city to operate golf carts on the city streets. And so that's what we are here today to ask for. Basically, we have, I don't know how many golf carts. We have probably 100 of them someplace, but they're mainly used for maintenance, and our physical plant is on Jackson Street, and our golf carts have to cross Jackson in order to enter the university. Once they're there within the university confines, you know, they're okay. I guess they're legal because they're on our property. But occasionally, because of the crowdedness, like in between semesters and even during the summer, there aren't as many students on our campus, and so it's not as big of a deal as far as safety issue goes. But right now, with over 6,000 students on our campus, there's a main mall that goes right down the center that everybody uses, including the students and including the golf carts. And so what we're asking for is very limited use of the public streets if necessary, like Van De Venter, for instance. If it gets so crowded down the middle of the school, sometimes a maintenance person can use the golf cart to get to the other side of campus by going to Van De Venter and crossing the street there at the light. This is not, like I said, just to, for us to, to go up and down Dean, to drive Van De Venter or even Avenue Inn, although our, one of our, one of the golf cart, two golf carts that we have there at the police station are for our parking services, and they do have to cross Avenue Inn in order to get to the ASU campus. And once on campus, they basically just patrol the parking lots, and then they only, when they go back, when they return to the police station, that's the only time they cross Avenue Inn. So the permission that we're asking for is just for very limited use of the public streets. Now, what's come out of this also, all of our golf carts are now street legal. They had to have mirrors, rearview mirrors, signal lights, headlights, and they have that slow-moving vehicle sign on the back of them. Before, any of our employees or students are allowed to operate a golf cart, we had to take a course that Mr. Murphy requires us to take so we can get certified to drive these golf carts. So we're not out there asking permission just to go crazy on the streets, and there are some restrictions that we put. The majority of the time, the great majority of the time, will be, will be on our campus, just, but it's mainly used for maintenance. But on occasion, we might have to go down one of the city streets to get to what we're trying to get, and that was the extent of, of our request.
Questions for Mr. Munoz?
Charlie?
Dr. Munoz, I've, I've seen, I've traveled through the campus occasionally.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've seen the golf carts when they're going, they stay in the crosswork, crosswalks when they go across Johnson. I am opposed to University Avenue simply because there's so much traffic through there and the junior high across the street and West Texas Rehab. It would just seem that the golf carts could travel through the Stevens Arena and down to get to the warehouse, and then, of course, the President's residence. That's really stretching it out.
It's about two blocks away.
Yeah.
And we normally try to use a pickup. Again, we normally use a vehicle, but we, occasionally there may be a need for a golf cart to drive down the road.
You said they were street-ready, but Chief, tell me if I'm wrong, I didn't think the state would issue a license to a golf cart, license plates, permit. They won't.
They, they will not, they, they will not issue registration on a, on a golf cart, but there are some requirements that have to be met in order to operate a golf cart on a public roadway. And, and those would be turn signals, brake lights, headlights, mirrors, those type of things, and, and the slow-moving placard, and to be compliant with that. Again, they won't be registered with the state, but they have to meet those minimum requirements in order to be able to be operated on the roadway.
Do we have that much violation? See, I know apartment communities and motels use golf carts, but usually the apartment communities keep them within the confines of their property, and it's very little, or do you see flagrant use of them using them?
No, we don't see a lot of misuse of the golf carts. ASU is probably, you know, the, the largest group, and, and we're, we're supportive of what they've brought to the table as far as their usage. You know, really what brought all this to light was an accident and, and which we haven't had in years, ever, ever had a golf cart accident there, and that's what brought all this really to the, to the forefront. We've had some apartment complexes that have utilized the vehicle, maybe going, you know, down the street several blocks, but most of it's always been work-related. We have issued this last Christmas season with UPS. UPS is, is taking and using golf carts where they, they did till we wrote them a couple of tickets, and they're not using the golf carts anymore. But they were carrying a trailer behind their golf cart and delivering packages that way. So, I mean, that would probably be another organization that may come forward later on as the season nears.
Mr. Fleming?
Tim, statewide, this, this is coming up more and more statewide, isn't it?
Yes, this, there's some communities, much smaller communities than ours, that have allowed operational golf carts within the city limits, just, you know, carte blanche if anyone wants to do it. That is not what we would recommend as a law enforcement organization, but it is a topic that is up all over the state of Texas. And it started with the session, a couple of sessions ago, when it passed the first time.
And so what, would you be in favor of, of this proposal for ASU as it stands?
Yes.
Where would we draw the line, though, where, like you just said, that UPS comes up to us next?
Oh, that's where y'all need to decide. But yeah, you're gonna have to find a line, you know, and, and be able to issue permits or not issue permits or, or allow certain entities to, to do it. You know, I, I think with the, the updating of their golf cart staff, obviously is gonna make a huge difference in the safety of those vehicles. And again, we've never had issues with them in years, as long as I've been here, and they've used those golf carts for years. We had that one accident that brought everything to the forefront. And so we're supportive of ASU being able to operate and continue the way they are, but as far as how you would go about saying which groups could do it and which ones could not, I, I don't know.
See, my problem with this is I feel, and I definitely am for this, for ASU, but there are some other organizations. I know that there's apartment complex that's in my district over here that has used them for years and years, and they, I, I thought the rules were that if you, we did allow it, we did make an ordinance to allow it, as long as they stayed on roads that were less than 35 miles an hour, is that what it is?
There's a, that's a, that's a state law. There's a lot of different things that can come into play. I, I wouldn't just limit it to roadways that are under 35 miles an hour, because every neighborhood in town is under 35 miles an hour, and you're gonna see golf carts everywhere. There's a lot of, there's a lot of other things to, to look at. Now, we do have the complete law here. Sergeant Kennedy has it with him to answer any specific questions in regards to those things, but that's just a portion of the law.
But if they're, my, I'm trying to figure this out. If, if we did allow people to do this, wouldn't it be a good thing for our city to, to promote not using as much gas, not putting as much pollution out there? If they're having to obey the law, they do still have to obey all the laws of the road, right?
Yes, they do. The, the one thing that I would, that I would point out is, you know, I was here a couple of weeks ago and told y'all accidents were increasing, and, and you're putting, I, I'm not supportive of putting a 16-year-old in a golf cart in the middle of the neighborhood with traffic and everything else at this point. I, I don't think that that's a good idea. Public safety, again, and you might be right. I mean, we're saving gas and less emissions and, and all that kind of stuff, but that's secondary to, to the safety portion of it for me.
I guess there could be an argument either way on that, though, because you've got a golf cart that only goes, say, 30 miles an hour as opposed to a car that can go 100,
Right.
or a 16-year-old. I mean...
Daniel?
Silas? Vardman?
Chief, you mentioned the, I'm sorry, I must be close. Chief, you mentioned as far as, I know this is pertaining to traffic law, so definitely we'd like to look at an ordinance here. But if we were to establish an ordinance, basically specifying that as far as a permit would go through the police department, you would go and, and, you know, check out the area to determine whether it would be feasible in that area. Basically, ordinance would spell out exactly what we'd expect on those golf carts, you know, speed limits and so forth, but with a permit that the police department would have to OK for a certain area. Once you review the plan, would you be open to that?
I'd be more open if there was a, an opportunity for an application process for an individual to go in front of a, a group of people, instead of me being able to just make the sole decision whether an apartment complex or a UPS or anybody like that has the ability to operate a golf cart. So, I mean, if I, if I need to be involved in that, I would be okay, but yeah, I, I think that I would much rather see an applicant, applicant have the opportunity in front of a group of, of people such as yourselves. The city council would probably be a great location.
With you, I could take it with your empathy, then. If somebody came before the city council, you'd have, just like you're doing right now with the Angela State, you know, you would, you would have already reviewed what they're requesting, and you would have a recommendation to the city council.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Silas?
Chief, say we approve this, do these golf carts fall into the normal flow of traffic or on the right-hand shoulder, or where, where would they operate?
Most of them operate on the right-hand shoulder, but they can operate with the normal flow of traffic. Every time I've seen them out at ASU, they're usually as close to the curb as possible. They, they can, you know, take up a lane if they need it to, but I think as long as they continue operating, the safest way is the most important way for them, and I think they're doing that right now.
So even on campus, Joe, I guess they're driving all over, every sidewalk that's out there if need be? Even while they're on campus, are they just cutting across different sidewalks out there, or?
No, 90, 90% of these golf carts are used for maintenance, and so they're all, they're on the grass, they're on the sidewalks, they're everywhere they need to be to maintain. We have, you know...
So they don't have to stay on the sidewalks, say?
They, no, they don't have to stay on the sidewalk, but there's trees and bushes and all that sort of stuff, you know? I think the safest way is to keep them, keep them on the sidewalk. That's about like 90% are gonna be for maintenance, just to maintain our facilities at the university, and so they are all over the campus.
But on Van De Venter or say like Campus Boulevard or Live Oak, more than likely, I'm guessing, the right shoulder, or?
Extremely right shoulder, and like I said, we've, we've already demanded, basically, Dr. May has, from our maintenance staff, that they stay off the roads and only, and not even, until we get permission to not even get on the roads until we get permission, and only that is the last resort, not as a primary way to get there. They're gonna do it last. it last, if that's only what they can get there. And we're asking for permission to visit the President's home. Again, we try to use pickups or cars, whatever we need to do to maintain that home, but occasionally, I can see the, I can see it, because it's happened before, where a car, golf cart, will have to make the trip down there to do something, because they do maintain the yard and the residence and all aspects of it. So, again, our intent is to use the city streets as a last resort. We just don't want to get cited anymore.
Would you consider?
Mr. Wardman?
I didn't mean to open a Pandora's Box here. My request was specific to ASU, and I understand that, you know, sometimes we unintentionally open up things. But ASU, to me, it's a vital part of their operation, and that is why I brought this forward. To me, I think the ordinance would need to be specific to ASU. And then, if we wanted to amend it as people came forward, and then we could, to me, it'd be a whole lot simpler and easier.
Ms. Farmer?
I don't have a problem with assisting ASU. I'd love to be able to do something. I just would like you to give up Live Oak and just use campus going back and forth, you know, because campus is such a wide street and Live Oak is not.
Well, we say Live Oak only because that's the address of the university's, but the travel would actually be down Campus Boulevard until we got to his home, and then we would just jump into the property there. We're not gonna go down Live Oak, all of Live Oak.
Love to see you give up university. Since there's so many areas to cut across through the Janelle Center or areas to get over to the Foster Field, and it's just, that's just my suggestion, but I'm not gonna vote against it, because I do want to assist ASU. And I've never seen them be very golf cart crazy out there. Like I said, they're usually in the crosswalks waiting for the light to turn, change to go and just doing their job.
And it's just our intent. I mean, I think we stuck it in there just in case we ever had to, that we could. But it's not our intent to use it on an everyday basis or anything like that.
Any other counsel?
Can we hear, there's another group here that wants to talk on this subject that's not from ASU. Can we let them come up and speak?
I'd like to hear them when we get to public comment, but is there any other, is there any other counsel comment? Mr. Wardlaw?
I'd just like to say I agree with Don Vardeman. Let's keep this thing, start out keeping it real limited, specific to ASU, and very specific as to what they can do and can't do. And that'll simplify it, and that'll satisfy this particular problem, hopefully.
All right, let's open up for public comment now. Anyone from the public care to comment upon this? Come on up, ma'am. Now, this is going to open it up a little bit more, but like for Ms. Story to talk. Mr. Alexander?
All right. She said, I'm Paul Alexander, former councilman, SMD-1. And no, I didn't hear a word that Chief Vasquez said, because I was headed this way. So, it's hard to listen and travel at the same time. We tried, but didn't get it set up right. But I did bring this to the city council first meeting in January, because, and Jeanette Story will step up behind me and explain her point of view, because we don't have a law in San Angelo regarding these golf carts. And when you don't have a law, it's illegal. The city has to permit them, or it's not legal, unless it's within two miles of golf course. And I live in Bentwood, and there's a lot of golf carts going back and forth. And so, I'm familiar with them. And what I wanted to do is bring it to the council and say, hey, is this something good for the entire city? Or is there certain sections of the city this is good? And I wanted to hear from the rest of the council, their parts of the city, and how this applies. Could it be a good thing? That's what I wanted to do. And so, and that brings us to where we are now. Since then, I've had other people approach me. The manager for UPS, is he here? Okay, the manager for UPS wants to be here. And there's also a swimming pool maintenance man that wants to be here. So, the manager is Gary Naylor, and Doug Webb owns a swimming pool company. And what he does, in Lubbock, he has a golf cart, and he goes up the alley, because he can go, it's pretty quiet, he can go from swimming pool to swimming pool, but he can hear children, he can hear activity, thinks it's safer than driving a big pickup down the alley. He can pull it up to the side, traffic can get around. He says it's a much more efficient system in Lubbock than it is here in San Angelo, because it's against the law to have a golf cart. But what he would do is create a golf cart that's legal, with all his maintenance stuff, and go up the alleys, especially in the Southland area. And so, I told him I could speak on his behalf. He's at an appointment. I canceled my appointment to get here. All right. The UPS man has had multiple golf carts pulled over. And UPS uses it, of course, to deliver packages around Christmas time. They believe it's more efficient for them to deliver via golf carts. And so, I'm speaking on their behalf as well today. And I really don't have a whole much, lot more, but what I'm asking the council to do is examine your area of the city and see if it is a good idea. It may not be a good idea in Santa Rita, because it's very tightly packed, and there's a lot of blind corners. But it's, I think it's a good idea in Southland, and I think it's a good idea around apartment complexes, when you're going from one complex to a storage unit or some, there's places in the city that would work out very well. And I would appreciate if y'all brought this up for discussion in future agendas.
Thank you, Paul. Ms. Story?
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Jeanette Story, I'm general property manager for Southland Park of Anguilla. Could you move the microphone cup to you? Oh, I'm short. How's that? Thank you. Okay. We were one of the ones who received a ticket last December for use of our golf carts. Prior to that, we had used our golf carts, and we have four of them. And we had used them for maintenance between our properties, which are all adjacent, even though they're widespread. But we had used them for over 20 years without any incidents whatsoever. And we have not had any accidents. But we were cited for use of the golf carts. We would need an ordinance that would not only allow us, we talk about the apartments, but there's more involved here than just the apartments. We have five different entities as such, but they're all adjacent to one another. So, we're talking about the Southland Center, the Southland Arms Apartments, which is in two locations, the daycare building, the vacant lot across the street from the apartments, Luke 306 Building at 2801, and the mini warehouses. And all of those are adjacent. I have sent each of you a map by email several weeks ago. And within it, I had marked the city streets. I failed to get Tim one, but I will. We think that we need to have an ordinance that allows us to use them specifically for our maintenance. We never used them during the nighttime. They were always used during our regular office hours, Monday through Friday, during daylight hours. And we had added uneventful time using them. We are dependent upon them, because they are economically feasible for us to use amongst the properties. But we do need something that would allow us to use them, not only going in and out of the apartment buildings, but also all of those adjacent properties, because they've been used for maintenance there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have all your golf carts where they're, they have all the lights, the horns, the mirrors?
If there is something that we don't have on there, it would be there before we would ever put them back on the city streets. We had, we had had them, we had the rearview mirrors. I don't think we've got the turn signals on them. Someone said something about turn signals a while ago, okay? But we've had the lights. We have replaced them as time has moved on, and we have tried to use that portion of the transportation code. But again, if there's something that we're missing, it would be there.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Story.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the, Jim Turner?
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and this is a little unusual situation for me. Actually, I work part-time for a business that is indirectly connected to this. I work for a company that makes electric bicycles, and we build the batteries, we put the power plants on them and so forth. And we have an electric pedicab, which is basically a very large electric tricycle that we're actually gonna have out here in the parking lot around noon to show off, that would probably fit into this area like the golf carts. And what needs to happen, when you're looking at an ordinance, there's a number of different classes of small, light electric vehicle, and sometimes gas-powered, unlicensed vehicles, that it need to be taken into consideration in these ordinances. You've got the electric bicycles, which includes three-wheel vehicles, they call them electric bicycle even though they're a trike, that as long as they meet certain criteria, they're legal on their Texas Traffic Code and so on with residential streets, things like that. Electric bicycles fit in there. You've got also your mobility scooters and so on. And I think it might even be time to address, having been watching now, how people ride bicycles within the city, because a lot of what's happening here is not very safe. They're driving against traffic, they're impeding traffic and so on, and they're ignoring the rules of the road. And I think that needs to be addressed at the same time. The small, highly efficient electric vehicles, including all of those that are not licensed, it's probably time to review how the city deals with those, whether they're allowed, whether or not, in addition to what the state and federal government say. You know, you wouldn't want to drive them on a freeway or on a highway, per se. But we do need to look at that. And especially, there are applications like, there are a number of applications like delivery, et cetera, where they could be useful, but there needs to be some rules, restrictions. And people need to know what they can and can't do in a sensible way that is safe. And this is what's happening here. A friend of mine just got back from China. The number of small electric vehicles there is huge. Cars are in the minority. He's been to Europe. You see electric, small electric vehicles, electric bikes, electric pedicabs, electric delivery vehicles everywhere. It's just starting to come to the US. We're gonna see it, we need to be ready for it, and I don't think we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any further comments from the public? Well, Don, it looked like we've taken a very simple little discussion and made it very complex.
Once again.
Once again. Do you have an idea of how we can solve this, sir?
What I would think, at least as a beginning, if we can get an ordinance for ASU, get it off-high center, then as needed, amend it, you know, modify it, do whatever we need to from there to where we have some sort of checks and balances in it. I think that would, that would serve the purpose that I intended anyway.
Would you put that in the form of a motion?
So moved.
Anybody want to second that motion?
Before you second it, this is my, this is my week of equality, I guess, you know. And we know we have two other businesses that are gonna immediately come to us. Would you consider putting those two in your motion?
I don't have any, any problem with it. I guess I'm just not quite as comfortable, because I reviewed with Mr. Munoz all the aspects of ASU's, and I know he's met with the police department and on and on. I would be open to looking at some of the other ones to get it off-high center, sure.
So, are you adding them, or?
Yes, I'll add that to my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Charlotte?
I just need a little bit of clarification before I can vote, and I'd like to hear from Sergeant Kennedy. Does this include motorized wheelchairs that terrorize my neighborhood, the streets and stuff, that, I mean, is that, is this going to include those, or can we just leave it at golf carts?
No, under state law, realize that there's so many definitions, and it's for every type of vehicle. What you're dealing with today is specific to golf carts, and they're what we see every day. I mean, it's a golf cart.
Okay.
But you also have a definition of a neighborhood electric vehicle that's similar with the police department owns. They're the ones that have the headlights, the turn lights, and they're manufactured as such. Again, another designation, another set of laws. Assisted mobility scooters, another set of definitions, another set of laws. What you need to really kind of focus on here is what are you defining and what are you allowing? I think that's probably gonna be your biggest issue. You know, what do you want to make permissible? Because it's still covered in state law. What you don't cover is permissible.
Okay. Thank you.
Don?
Go ahead. Corby, is there any difference between the mule, John Deere-type vehicles and golf carts? Would it be easier to try to steer some of these entities toward those, or what's your opinion on that?
Again, another set of rules, another set of definitions. And they're all similar. But, you know, maybe we add a part here, a turn signal or a headlight, and now we've changed the definition of that vehicle. And it's just like a neighborhood electric vehicle as opposed to a golf cart. If you add something to it, or you, you might add a safety device like a turn signal or rearview mirror, it changes the definition entirely, as opposed to like a Gator, what you're thinking of, or a Ranger, as opposed to an ATV. A Ranger is a recreational off-highway vehicle, and it's another set of rules. This has all kind of come apart over the last probably 12 years, where if we change something on it, now it's not classified as this, so we have to make a new set of rules and a new set of definitions, instead of kind of lump summing them all together.
Well, and I definitely want my, my motion and ordinance to be in compliance with the law, of course, and working through the police department. But mine is specifically right now for golf carts.
Is that your specific second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming?
So, it wouldn't include neighborhood vehicles, neighborhood electric vehicles?
Not at this time. What I'd like to do is get the ordinance, let's review it, let's see how it works, and then whatever we need to do to amend it, I think will be much easier.
Okay.
Can I ask what the?
Yes, ma'am.
What does the city use for the parks and stuff? Is that a golf cart? Is it a Gator?
Typically use Gators.
Okay.
They do on occasion for special events.
Okay.
Use golf carts. But typically, like at the sports complex, those kind of things, we use a Gator.
I would just like to add that I think that we, if we're gonna look at the ordinance, we need to be sure that we have minimum equipment requirements and be sure that everybody's in agreement on what we're gonna require them to have on those golf carts.
Mr. Alexander?
I was listening to how the motion was going, and we're adding a couple of businesses. And I would suggest making the motion to apply to commercial entities. I listed three commercial entities. There's gonna be more coming forward. FedEx is gonna want in, you know. So, I would say, look at Angelo State University and make an exception for commercial entities. They have insurance, they have responsibility as a company. They can be sued if they do something wrong. You see what I'm saying? So, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Paul.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So, Don, in your motion, when you wanted to start with ASU but add the other two, the other two, could we not just leave it open, like you're saying, and then tweak it later on? Or what other two are we talking about to be more?
The apartment communities. And, you know, once again, Paul, what he, what he brought up, I thought was very viable. If I can kick this motion out and let me remove it, and we'll try again.
Yes.
Start over.
All right. What my motion is, is to develop an ordinance for golf carts specific to Angelo State University and commercial entities throughout our community.
Simple.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to create an ordinance that would be specific to ASU and other commercial entities.
And we're?
Got it?
I think so. And we're gonna make sure that they have the rules, just like Tim said, where they have turn signals, lights.
Yes.
They have all those rules in place.
Right.
And that's your, that's your second, Marty?
Yes.
All right. Yes, sir.
Sorry. Restricted operators, operations, driver's license, those type of things. Maybe if you're gonna do commercials that they, I believe that we need the ability to revoke the privilege of operating those as well in the ordinance.
Yes, absolutely. And in the ordinance, that's, that's why, of course, we bring it for two readings. Working with the police department, traffic, whoever needs to, to get it done.
We'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Don, I might ask you to clarify if that, as Charlotte brought up, the city does use those type vehicles at special events, those kind of things. So, I don't know if the, under the commercial or the slash-government side, like ASU, if the city might fall under that as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Well, that sounds like a workable motion. I'm glad that you got through that, Don. You did very well.
Very good job, Don.
If there's no further comment, either the public or the council, I will ask for the vote on this. The motion has been made, it has been seconded, that we allow golf carts at ASU and other commercial entities. All of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Mark that one with a seven-oh, Ms. Ramirez. Mark that one with a seven-oh, Ms. Ramirez. All right, let's move now back to item number eight. Item number eight is the first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance, amending chapter 12, Exhibit A zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Z 1325 Ephraim and Lupi Puente. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'll try to keep us moving quickly. On this particular request, we did send out 17 notifications. Again, this request is to change the zoning from a ranch and estate to a single-family residential or RS1 zoning. We received of those 17 notifications, two in favor and one in opposition. Those were included in your background packet. I do also want to mention to you, although we did not receive something in writing, we did have three property owners who spoke in opposition at the hearing. And I'll show you where those three property owners originate from in just a moment. The property that we're talking about today is in northern western San Angelo. The subject property is shown here on the slide at the intersection of Fisher Street and Townview Lane. This is just west of the intersection of Glenna with Houston Hart and just north of the intersection of Arden Road with Houston Hart. And here's a closer view of that subject property. You might note that directly across Fisher Street to the east, we do have a series of RS1 zone tracks. That rezoning was done, I believe, in 2009. So this is a similar request for directly across the street, and we'll talk about case history in just a moment. Here is an aerial photograph of the area. The subject property does currently have one home on the southernmost portion of that lot. It's our understanding at this point that that home would stay in place, and the remainder of the property would be subdivided into single-family lots mirroring those directly across Fisher Street to the east. Here is an excerpt from the Vision Plan map. The yellow designates a neighborhood classification, therefore, the subject request is consistent with the Vision Plan map. The area in green just to the west denotes open space, which is transferable as a ranch and estate type of zoning designation. Again, a lot of what you see to the north and to the west of the property is ranch and estate. Here is a map showing all of the tracks and the notification area and their responses. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we had two property owners who wrote in in favor of the request. Those are property owners 10 and 6, shown in green, and property owner 14, and shown in the red, wrote in in opposition to the request. I'll also mention that property owners 9, 5, and 11, all to the west and northwest of the subject property. We did not receive anything in writing from them, but they did appear at the Planning Commission meeting, speaking in opposition, and therefore, we wanted you to have all the facts on that. Just a few photographs, this is looking south down Fisher Street. The subject property is to your right or to the east. And this is looking north along Fisher Street. Subject property is now on the left-hand side of the screen, and you can see some of the single-family residential development that has occurred. Again, just across the street, and this development, if approved, would mirror that type of development. This is looking at the subject property. The house in question is just off of the slide to the left. As you can see, the remainder is vacant. And again, this is just another view of those homes just across the street. Planning staff does recommend approving the zone change request. I will mention back in 2004, there was a zoning request in this area. And at that time, city staff did recommend this same subject property to be included. That was recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission. The council at that time chose not to embrace that within the request. The Planning Commission heard this case at their August meeting. It was a four-to-one vote, but they did recommend approval of the request. I can give you more information, but first I'll open it for questions, and if need be, I can continue.
Is this your area, Marty? I know it's right on the line.
It's, mine stops at Mercedes, but it goes across the loop.
So is it yours or Marty's?
I'm not real sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I do believe it is.
I know it's right on the line.
Well, part of, on the inside of Mercedes toward the loop is mine, and I do know that.
Well, Marty, since it's yours.
It's a hodgepodge, it's a hodgepodge area of.
I'll take it. I'll make the.
Since it's yours, Marty, I'd ask that you make a motion one way or the other, and then defend it.
I move we approve. We approve it.
Second.
Let's have council discussion on this. Anyone care to weigh in?
The properties across the street are already being built that way. And they're pretty much all full, I think, if I remember right.
You are correct. And we probably would not recommend going much further west of this, and the Vision Plan is in line with that, as you can see here, but this is right on the edge.
Right.
Any other council discussion on this? Do we have anyone from the public wishes to weigh in on this? If not, I have a motion that we approve this as it has been presented. I have a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Put another seven-oh on that one, Ms. Ramirez. Number nine is first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance authorizing abandonment with a public right-of-way between Cornix Edition Block 2 and immediately north of Blocks 8 and 11, and south of the Baptist Memorial Geriatric Edition, Section 2, Block 2, Lot 1, North Central San Angelo, an ordinance providing for the abandonment and closing of the following street segment to wit and approximately 20-foot wide by four 50-foot long portion of alley running east to west perpendicular to Holcomb, located behind Cornix Edition Block 2, immediately north of Blocks 8 and 11, and south of Baptist Memorial Geriatric Edition, Section 2, Block 2, Lot 1, North Central Angelo, authorizing the conveyance thereof to the abutting property owners, providing for the terms and conditions of abandonment and conveyance, and providing for the mayor to execute and deliver a quick, quick claim deed to the abutting property owners. Ms. Farmer?
Thank you. This request is an abandonment of alley, that is correct. In this particular instance, both property owners that are adjacent to the alley are one in the same, which is Baptist Memorials. We'll go through that in a moment. We did send out seven notices as required. We received zero in favor or in opposition of the subject request. Here is the subject property. This is just north of Houston Hart. This is in the northeastern part of the city and is just west from North Main Street, which is where you actually enter the Baptist Memorials campus that I'm sure everyone's familiar with. Here's a closer view of that portion of the campus. Again, here is North Main Street, just to the right, and the shaded area is the subject alley. The intent from Baptist Memorials in abandoning this alley is the properties that are just to the south of this alley. They're looking at doing some development on those properties, building some greenhouses for residential usage. And this alley would function as an internal driveway for their campus. You will notice that there is a north-south alley component just to the east that would remain open and unobstructed. And it will be required to have a hammerhead turnaround, which will be placed on this triangular Lot 11 in order to meet fire code requirements for access. Here is an aerial photograph. Again, these lots are currently vacant. They are also lots that you'll be looking at in the next meeting or two, as they are also the subject of a requested zone change. And we are also working on a replat for this subject property that would precede the permitting for these homes. This is the alleyway in question. This is standing in the route of way for Holcomb Street, looking east. As you can see, it's completely unimproved at this time. And then this looks west from Holcomb at the termination of that alley. Onto Holcomb Street, you have residential properties just across the street. We did, as typical with these abandonment requests, poll all of our internal staff departments, as well as our external utilities, and we received no comments from them, with one exception. There was a request for an alley access easement for utilities to be retained along the entire segment, and we have made that a condition of the approval in the draft ordinance that was in your background packet. With that, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into further detail if necessary.
Is this in your area, Don, or is it yours, Silas?
It's mine.
Well, if it's yours, make a motion and defend it.
AJ, quick question. The alley that's behind the church there?
Let me go back to the map, that might help.
The one that you says is to the far east of this, yeah, right there?
This alley here? Yes, sir.
You said a turnaround.
There will be a turnaround placed here on the corner of Lot 11. That will enable emergency vehicles to pull into the alley and have a way to turn around and get back out, since that will be a dead end if this is approved.
And Baptist owns all those lots there, anyway?
All of these lots to the south, yes.
Okay. I'll make a, no, I'll move, I'll move to approve this item as presented.
Do we have any further council discussion on this item? Charlotte?
Just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With reference to tax exemption? Do additional properties that they purchase or acquire automatically become tax exempt?
I'm not certain. I believe that that is the case, but I'm, again, not certain of that.
I thought the housing wasn't tax exempt.
It's all tax exempt.
I think it's all tax exempt.
I think we might have someone in attendance from Baptist Memorial that might be able to answer that question.
I know.
So there was zero opposition?
That is correct, both from property owners and from.
Even the homeowner on the corner next to the subject property?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am. State your name and.
Quinda Paul Duncan. I'm the executive director at Baptist Memorials. And any, my understanding, I haven't read this recently, but any land that we've purchased that is contiguous to where we are providing health care services are not taxed. Land that we purchase that's not contiguous, that is just land, can be taxed. So we have a combination. The area which we're looking at, that area, will be, it'll be an assisted living, member care assisted living. So we'll be providing health care services. As well as, we also, from a tax exempt standpoint, we also do over 4% charity care every year throughout the campus, including all parts of the houses and all the health care parts as well. Any other questions?
Just a separate note, if we could get a ruling on that for future, I would like.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe that's one of your words, contiguous. What does that mean?
Don't ask me to define it or spell it.
Okay.
Basically, it shares a border.
Connected to.
Okay, we have a motion, we've had public comment. Anything else from council? The motion has been made that we approve this as it has been presented. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Seven-oh, ma'am. Let's go to number 10. First public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending chapter 12, Exhibit A zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Z 1326 Mills Development Incorporated, an ordinance amending chapter 12, Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Texas, which said Exhibit A of chapter 12 adopts zoning regulations, use district, and a zoning map in accordance with the comprehensive plan by changing the zoning and classification of the following property to wit, an unaddressed track occupying a 24.484 tract extending northwest from Mills Pass Drive and located directly west of an 8.995 acre tract annexed to the city limits on March 5, 213, that comprises a Prestonwood Edition, Section 2, in southwest San Angelo, changing the zoning classification from ranch and estate to a single-family residential district, providing for severability and providing a penalty. Ms. Farmer?
Thank you. On this request, we sent 14 notifications. We received two in favor, zero in opposition. Those two returned in favor were included in your background packet. This is a familiar area, as it is an area that we recently annexed to the city limits. So we're looking at far southwest San Angelo. This is just behind the Sam's Club area in Sherwood Way. This property is just under 25 acres in size. In the request for annexation that originally came to the council, the property owner intended to continue, this is part of the Prestonwood Edition, which exists currently to the east and the southeast of the property. Here's a closer view of that subject property, and again, you can see the existing subdivision in close proximity to it. Here is an aerial photograph. Again, the area is largely undeveloped at this time, though if you've traveled out there, you might have noticed some of the improvements that are going in as part of the subdivision process. Here is an excerpt from the Vision Plan map for the city, calling this area to be neighborhood, and therefore, the RS1 or single-family designation is consistent with that. Here is a map showing the surrounding property owners. Again, property owners 1 and 9, 9 being the subject property owner, and 1 being a neighbor directly to the southeast, both wrote in in favor of the request. Here's just a couple of photographs. This is looking, again, north at that undeveloped subject property. This vantage point is along Mills Pass Drive. And here's another intersection along Mills Pass, looking south as this property opens up towards the southeast. Here's another view looking west. And then here's an east view showing you the existing subdivision that is in place there. You might recall that when annexed into the city, it is our policy that those properties are annexed with an RNE or ranch and estate zoning designation. That is our holding zone and allows us to properly plan for the area in order to fit in with the city limits. In this case, planning staff does feel that the RS1 designation is appropriate for the location. We do recommend approval. The Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval at their most recent meeting. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Mrs. Farmer, I believe this is in your area.
It is. Lots of dove hunting went on out there this weekend. Move to approve as presented.
Second. I've got a motion to approve as, 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 as given to us?
Presented.
As presented. Lost my word. And I've got a second. Do I have any other council discussion on this? Anyone from the public want to weigh in on this one? Okay, we've got a motion to.
Without the dove hunting. Without the dove hunting.
No dove hunting. Motion to approve as presented without dove hunting. I do have a motion, I do have a second. All of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Thank you.
You got that one, Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's move on now and pick up. Let's get number 15. We've already dealt with 14, and that, that will leave 10. That will leave 11, 12, and 13, which are city items. Number 15 is discussion and seeking direction of city council regarding changes to Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Section 12, 606 Portable Signs. Councilmember Fleming, presentation by Al Farver and Al Torres. Ms. Farmer?
I think you purposely waited till I got to the back of the room. We don't exactly have a presentation today. We have met with Councilman Fleming about the issue, and it sounds like the, the desire would be to reexamine the portable sign restrictions for the City of San Angelo and essentially lengthening the time for which those signs can be permitted. So here to answer any questions, but essentially, we're looking for direction from the council.
Ms. Fleming, you want to go ahead and set this up for us, please, sir?
The ordinance now states that you can do 90 consecutive days in a one-year period. And what I'd like to do is increase that to 180 days in a one-year period. It can be consecutive, or it can be every other month. You can do it basically however you want, but 180 days within that period. This item was brought to me by one of the owners of the small portable business company here. There's a couple of companies here in town. And it's also brought to my attention by a couple of small business people here in town. The affordability of advertising nowadays is becoming very, very expensive. And these small business owners, they, this is something that, this is an avenue that they can have, that they can afford to do. But with just being able to do it for 90 days in a one-year calendar period has really put it down on them, and it's made it hard for them to do that. So I'm trying to make it, you know, give in to them and also help them out, and also not have signs 20, you know, 12 months a year on a corner, on every corner in the city. So I think this would be a viable option, where we're basically, six months of the year, you can do it. Six months of the year, you can't do it. You can do it straight through. And the way we had talked about writing it was to, I think we pay for, AJ, do we pay, we pay for every 30 days? Is that right now? We had.
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
We pay $25 for 30 days right now?
Correct.
What we'd do is make it where it's $25 for every 30 days. So that would actually bring in more revenue to the city, which is always a good thing. And, and it would help out a small business people here throughout the whole city.
If you will make that in the form of a motion, I will gladly second.
I move that we change the ordinance to 180 days from 90 days. And it can be consecutive or spread out throughout the calendar year.
I will second that motion, and if you want to make it for 365 days, I will make, I will second that motion as well. I hate this sign ordinance. It is the most, it is, it is the worst thing we've ever done to businesses in San Angelo. I'd like to see it say, "Sign ordinance, period." That would satisfy me. But every bite we can take of this thing, I will, I will second, so.
What do we currently get? What is the rate or the fee structure?
It is also currently $25 for a 30-day period. The difference is that the maximum period for one year is now 90 days. So you have three increments of 25, whereas with this request, you would be extending that.
I just, I just wonder if we need to look at that rate.
I think we talked about with Daniel about raising all rates pretty much across them, because we're behind, years behind on most of them.
Well, it's not so much, yeah, as far as adjusting the rates and making.
Well, it's not so much, yeah, as far as adjusting the rates and making sure that we study and make sure that they're at the level that they should be. And it's not, some of them will stay the same and some will go a bit higher. But this would be one of those that we take a look at and say, hey, this is a little bit too low.
$25 is not going to cover the cost of enforcing and monitoring the ordinance.
And that was my question. Who does that?
It's a good question, and there's never been a singular answer to it. In the past, it has been sort of a team approach with both permits inspectors and code enforcement officers working that. Right now, it's really falling on the permits inspectors to enforce that. And you can imagine that that, that's a big job.
Okay, if I come in, as it stands now, if I come in and want to sign this month, and I have a 30-day permit, and I don't take it down, who checks? Is that your inspectors now?
Well, as I was saying, right now, it's our inspectors. We're struggling with coming up with a program to do that consistently right now, because it's really just fallen to us recently. But we are working on getting a system in place to go out and enforce those and get those picked up. What code compliance would do is they would go out there, and basically, if 30 days were up, they would give you a 24-hour notice. And then they would go out there and actually pick up the sign and pound it. And then you had to come pay a fine to pick it up again, so.
So it's your office that gives the permit?
Yes, sir.
So is, does it work easier with code or with y'all to be the enforcer?
Well, for us, of course, it worked easier when code compliance was doing the enforcing, because they had, they had a system in place to do that. They had an officer that was, basically, that's all he did was signs on certain days. So, of course, you know how busy we're starting to get. So we're trying to find which inspectors are going to do that when, so.
Yeah. And I think that that's probably something, I know Daniel's going to be reviewing in October, but might be something that you really want to look at, only.
Right. And that's certainly something we're doing across the board, is taking a look at, taking a new look at who's doing what, you know, with all these new duties and the businesses coming in.
Mr. Fleming?
Don, one thing I want to say is, from what I'm hearing, they're policing themselves pretty good. What you're having is, you're having a couple of companies, and now there's, I think there's three, and they're checking out the permits, and they're making sure, they're calling in, I believe, and reporting when somebody goes over a day. So it's, you know, they're helping us out a little bit in that aspect, because there's not a lot of companies, not saying that there won't be, because another new one came to town just last week.
Our biggest issue is going out and finding violations. Like Councilman said, we, right now, we get a lot of complaints. The companies calling each other and individuals calling them. So when we get a complaint, of course, we do go out and check on those. What we're having trouble doing is a system where we go out and look for violations.
Don, my biggest deal on this is just helping out the small business person.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, I think we can work out all the other details on it. I just want to help out. When I have a person calling me, and this is, this is their income, and they are not making a lot of money, I really want to help them out as best I can. And I think this is only a small step, but I think this is a step in the right direction.
Well, I agree with you. I just, you know, here again, if we're going to be looking at fees and stuff, I want to make sure that we enforce them, because for a lot of, for a long time, we have had ordinances and nobody enforced them, and so we're kind of dropping the ball there.
Sounded to me like that confiscation is a pretty good, pretty good thing. They'll pick them up. Johnny?
I had a question for Al. Not so much question, but clarity. Just for clarity, the portable signs, is it a backlit sign? Is it a sign on the truck? I can pull up. Is a tent sign? Is it, just so we are on the same page, how are you defining portable signs?
Do you want me to just read the definition of the sign ordinance?
Well, just.
It's basically, it's basically a four-foot by eight-foot, most of them are four-foot by eight-foot corrugated sign that the letters are removable.
Because if I put, if I put a four-by-eight vinyl banner sign in the back of my truck and parking in front of my business, is that considered?
No, that's not allowed. It's got to be anchored to the ground to be considered a portable sign.
Stakes and.
Right. And the actual definition is a sign where the entire face is corrugated plastic or other material, generally within a metal or wooden frame, and which is not permanently affixed to a building or the ground. And then C, Section 12, 606, which has a lot of other requirements to it. So, I mean, you see them around town. It's, you know, the, there's a maximum size limit of 35 square feet. Most of them are four-by-eight, which is 32 square feet. And, you know, you can, you can change the message on the, on the sign.
So a four-by-eight vinyl banner sign with stakes on each end, maybe one in the middle?
Right, with the legs.
It doesn't have a frame around it. Is that considered?
Yes.
It is?
Generally, it sounds like that's correct. We kind of just have to see it and make a determination, because, yeah, you're right, sometimes people make homemade, homemade versions of it, and we have to kind of look at them.
Okay.
We have a motion. We have a second. We've had discussion. Is there any more?
Who has a second?
Who's second?
I was the second. Do we have any discussion from the public? Anybody else want to weigh in on this? If not, we'll take a vote. Motion has been made that we extend this from 90 to, you just said 180, didn't you?
180.
Now, that's better than nothing. From 90 to 180. It has been said. If all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Got one nay. Make that a 6-1. Mr. Wardlaw opposed.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
We're going to take that as direction from council. We'll bring back the ordinance for.
That's well, that's well. Thank you.
Aye opposed.
Oh, we had two opposed. Put Charlotte down in opposition as well.
I wasn't very loud.
Had a 5-2. We have three items left. Item 13 probably will just about get us to lunchtime. If the council's approval is, is in favor of that, and Chief Dunn is still here, is it all right to go ahead and take 13? Counsel?
Sure.
Item 13 is consideration of authorizing the rollover of funds from ambulance revenues in the amount exceeding $2,430,000 original budget from the FY1213 to the FY1314 general fund, fund balance for the purchase of data system software, including related hardware, and a fire truck, included related equipment. Chief Dunn?
Morning, Mayor, Council. What we're asking council to do is rollover the excess funds. The $2,430,000 is what we had budgeted for ambulance revenues for fiscal year 13. In late October of 2012, we came forward with the new ambulance billing schedule. So that went into place. We're going to collect excess revenues because of that in this year here that we're in right now. That's where, we should collect in the vicinity of $2,880,000. So $450,000 over what was budgeted. What we're asking to do is for you to roll those funds over so that we can purchase the software we need, which is our database software, which helps you collect that other $3 million in ambulance, that will be in ambulance revenues this upcoming year. The other part is another $210,000 to go in your capital line for this budget year, that we had $250,000 for a fire truck. So that makes $450,000 total, or $460,000 total for a fire truck. About $410 for the truck and $50,000 for the equipment for it.
One thing I would add to what Brian said is, by doing this, we're talking about dollars that are actually in this year. So this does not affect the dollars that you've been looking at from a budget standpoint in allocations for the upcoming year. Those are not affected. But what it would do is some of the items, such as the software, which was on your list of capital things that had to be done, that was on this upcoming, that would take that off the list, because we would fund it in this manner, which would take it off your list for next year.
Yes, this is a one-time use money prior to October 1, 2013.
Counsel? What's your pleasure on this?
Do I dare bring up, is there enough money here to compensate for what we were short on the firemen?
That would be a rolling revenue deal, and that, this is a one-time expense type money.
Yeah. And they, and those are things Lisa has been working with the budget dollars y'all gave her last week, that she's been working to keep that in the budget.
Someone want to move to approve or to deny?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Brian, how do you come up with a 2.8 million, you know, anticipated revenue? How do you?
Right now, our estimated revenue last year was $2,430,000, what I put there. We changed the billing schedule after that was put into effect, because the budget was voted on in August or September. In late October, that new ambulance billing schedule was put into effect. The higher rates, we've collected more revenue as we anticipated we would, but that wasn't accounted for when we went into the 1213 budget. So through the first 10 months of this year, we've collected $2,397,000, $32,000 and change short of what we anticipated for last year with two months left to collection.
But that's not on top of what the 2.4 million?
No, it just goes up from the.
From that up.
Right. So you have an increase in revenue of, what was it?
For this coming year?
Yes.
It was going, you'll be in the $3 million.
Right now.
Oh, right now? It'll be about $450,000 over what we anticipated.
Mr. Wardlaw?
That's a lot of activity. Do you still have the same system as when I was there?
Oh, yes. And we've been unsupported for two years now. And if it goes down, we're going to be in a world of hurt.
Is the Fire Marshal's Office still a part of that, or did y'all split?
No, they're still with us. And all this stuff would include the stuff for them, too.
That was my next question. The 210 will include all the tax furs and infers and all those sort of things.
Because of what they do, they're tied to us.
I move for approval as presented.
Second. Any other further council discussion on this item? Do we have any discussion from the public on this item? The motion has been made that we pull money, $450,000?
That's what I'm guessing will be in excess. That's why I wrote in excess.
That we take the rollover from the 12 to the 13 budget and roll it in for a fire truck and software. That pretty well covered it?
Yes.
Motion has been made. There has been a second. No further comments. I'll call for the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? That's a seven oh, Ms. Ramirez.
Mayor, you'll see that item begin in a future budget amendment, and so this won't be the last of it. We'll, we'll bring it as part of a future action.
All right, counsel. We have two items left on the regular agenda. One of them is number 11, which is a budget discussion. The other one is with two parts. The other one is number 12, which is a budget discussion, which is probably going to consume a lot of time. It is 11:47. I would suggest that we break for lunch at this time, go into executive, and when we get through, come back and deal with these two items. Does anybody agree with me?
Yes.
That looks like enough. Let me read then the executive session. Executive session, this is number F under 3. Executive session under the Division of Government Code Title 5, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meeting, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. Section 5510712, to consult with attorney on a manner in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clear to conflict with this chapter regarding West Texas Water Partnership. Section 551072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at number 1, Lake Nazworthy Leash Lots, number 2, Red Arroyo Hills Edition, number 3, West Texas Water Partnership. Section 551074A1, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager. I'm seeing about an hour and a half. Does anybody agree with me? If it is 12 o'clock and it takes an hour and a half, that means that we will be back here in open session at 1:30 to deal with the budget. Anybody agree with me there? Okay. We're breaking for executive and lunch. We will be back here at 1:30. And at that time, then we will move on numbers 11 and number 12. It is 11:48, and we're moving into executive. Meeting again. It is 2:27. And let me get my computer up. All right, we are to item number 11. This is discussion and consideration of matters related to the fiscal year 213, 214 budget, including, A, second public hearing of proposed property tax levy for the City of San Angelo for 213 tax year, and B, second public hearing and consideration of adopting an ordinance of the City of San Angelo approving and adopting the FY214 budget and related matters, and ordinance of the City of San Angelo approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 213, ending September 30, 214, adopting employee compensation schedules, providing for the general appropriation of funds, reserving under the city council the authority to transfer appropriations, budgeting, ratifying transfers of appropriations occurring in the 2012 and 2013 fiscal year, and amending that budget ordinance accordingly, reserving under the city council the power only as permitted by law to admit or, to amend or make changes in the budget for municipal purposes, providing authority for the city manager or his designee to make certain adjustments from time to time in or between budgeted allocations, authorizing the city manager or his designee to apply for certain grants, and execute any related documents, and providing for filing of the budget. Ms. Morgan?
Good afternoon. To briefly touch on, if you'd like, we can take these item by item. Take item A first, wrap it up, and then move on to item B. Just a quick reminder of where we are. September 3, as we've discussed, we're going to have the approval of the budget ordinance, which is item B. But first, we're going to start with item A, which is, sorry, it's not listed on this page, but the second public hearing of the proposed property tax levy for the current tax year. And so.
Morgan, help us understand, item A is not an action item?
Correct.
It's simply a public hearing. And this is the state's mandate in an attempt to generate transparency. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
All right. So no action required on A, except to open the microphone to public comment?
Correct. So if the public likes, I can briefly just remind where we are. On August 6, we took the record vote that the city is going to levy a property tax. The proposed rate, as we'll get into more, is 77.6 cents. And the property tax levy ordinance will be introduced later today. But as part of the budget, we need to make that available to the public for public comment.
So this is just a public hearing, so now I need to open up to the public if they want to comment upon the 213, 214 budget. Anyone from the public want to comment on the 213, 214 budget? Then we have fulfilled our state demanded obligations, and we've had a public hearing, correct?
Absolutely.
Move on to B, please, ma'am.
So recall that last time we introduced the budget, I say last time, August 20, the last regular meeting, we introduced the budget ordinance. We went into a budget workshop on the 27th to add specific items, to give flexibility for raises and all of that. So what I have before you is a brief for item B. These items are included in the general fund budget. And what you have before you, of course, is the cover memo, which speaks to all these items, the ordinance, which shows what I'm about to detail, and the financial summaries or statements that, for each fund. So for the general fund budget, no surprises here. What we've talked about the last few meetings and coming for quite some time to include these items on the screen, which I'll breeze through pretty quickly unless, just let me know if you want me to stop. Meeting confer contract for police department raises, $465,000. Fire training center debt service for $200,000. Raises for other employees, $812,000 and change. Contractually obligated targeting crease requests. Recall, this is the contract we have for the Water Lily. Raises for fire department pay scales. So this is to address year one of a two-year plan for $125,000. Cemetery improvements, we're going to include that in the allocation for capital project monies. So since we're just talking about general fund, that will be in a separate fund. To lower the tax rate by half a cent, like I said, the proposed tax rate is .776 per hundred dollars evaluation, which is a half-cent reduction. And so that will show total revenue over expenditures for, to be designated for a rainy day fund. And what that looks like in another format, perhaps easier to read, is that we started with revenue over expenditures of almost $2 million. When you subtract out the items I just listed, that leaves the revenue over expenditure of $185,000. And that's presented in your financial summaries with an asterisk, that the intent is to dedicate this for a rainy day fund.
Morgan, I'd like to call that Rainy Day Fund, a Dwayne Morrison Rainy Day Fund. Can you note that on there?
The commemorative, yes, sir.
Yes.
If Mr. Morrison will guarantee that there's some rain in those days, we'd gladly comply.
And.
We'll take that, too.
And with that, today's obligation to meet the state prescribed calendar is to have that second reading on the budget ordinance and to take a vote on that. We do have additional information prepared for you. We had requests for additional information on the Stormwater Fund and the Development Corporation Fund, so we have that available to go over, and just items that are coming up, so. So we have that available to go over and just items that are coming up, so.
Morgan, before we get too far into it, we made some commitments during that work session that staff would follow up on some items. In fact, I think they were sourced from one of the council members' suggestions for things that we consider. Do you have that list on a slide so we can be accountable to counsel on that?
No, it's in that packet that was delivered to you. I probably have it.
I wanna make sure that we're accountable on those items and that...
I have a problem with the wording cemetery improvements. I want it to be specific as either columbarium or amounts.
Or both.
Or both.
I think there was additional discussion that was going to happen because phase one of the improvements, I believe, is the $416,000 we've talked about. And the col...
$316,000.
$316,000. Okay, I apologize. And the columbarium is one of many of the phases of the improvements. And so I was under the impression that there was gonna be more discussion about the allocation of those dollars and exactly how that was gonna happen.
If we could, let's let that... Let's take care of this, and we'll let that one go to a capital improvement. That way, we can discuss that separately.
So in your cover memo, there were these items that I just went over. I apologize. This is... As discussed at the August 27 work session, we had these items that were added to the general fund. I went over those briefly. For other funds, we made this change to the Workers Comp Fund to reduce the safety incentive program and budget that amount in claims instead. We're also working to follow up. For this meeting, we were... Was requested Development Corporation and Stormwater Funds for future meetings as follow-up on the wastewater transfers. Revisit the hotel occupancy tax allocations, particularly those contracts for the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the San Angelo Cultural Affairs Council, to freeze the cell phones, except for those positions that are currently authorized, to present documentation analysis of car allowances versus mileage. And discussion on how to allocate the remaining funds for capital projects, which is where the cemetery details will be worked out. And so this is our short to-do list, which is coupled with, you know, some behind-the-scenes items to continue working and getting a budget that's a working document that we can all be proud of.
Mayor, I wanted to make sure that we hadn't missed anything. We made that commitment last week to follow up on those items, and I wanna make sure that counsel was happy with that list. So we don't... This will be a working to-do list for us to follow up on those items. Wanted to make sure.
That's about what I remember from our last meeting. Looks like we got them all down. I don't... Anybody see anything that's there or not there?
I have one question about the 77 point... Or 77.6 cents. This year's tax rate was 78 cents, is that correct?
It was 78.1, yes, sir.
Point one, okay. So that's how you came up with the six.
77.6 is a half-cent reduction.
You rounded up to the higher amount.
78.1 minus the half a cent is the .776.
I agree.
You're good.
And with that, like I said, the state deadline requires that we have the second reading on this ordinance and a final adoption of the budget. But we have, of course, prepared items for the Development Corporation Funds and Stormwater Funds, if it's the council's pleasure to get into that detail at this time.
Okay, y'all wanna get into Stormwater first?
Does she need approval on this part of it? Do we just go?
This is still part of item B. And so we want the council to be perfectly comfortable with what we're adopting. And so if there are questions about the Stormwater and Development Corporation Funds, I would suggest we take those at this time so that the motion on the ordinance can be with all questions answered.
Let's talk about Stormwater.
Yeah.
Let's talk about Stormwater.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One other consideration and food for thought here is we've got that appraisal out, you remember, on the Christian Village property. And it's supposed to come back toward the end of September. So I don't know whether that would necessitate holding up everything or whatever. But I wouldn't mind postponing that particular one and go to the coast of DC, but whatever.
Well, anything we do, we can come back with a budget amendment.
Correct, the state does allow.
Whatever we do today, we can amend it next month, whenever is necessary or whenever, so.
Mayor, not only that, because of the capital element associated with the Stormwater Fund, this should be part of a future discussion as we discuss capital issues, both routine and big capital. As we try to deal with some of the... Tackle some of the big issues like streets, the Stormwater Fund will need to be part of that discussion. So whether we discuss it today or not, we'll be discussing it in the future as we consider those bigger issues. So we're glad.
So we can go ahead and approve this as it is and get our second reading and get this done, and then we can talk about the other things?
Well, yes, sir. That's the short answer. However, the COSA DC budget approval is wrapped up in the rest of the approval. So we should have that discussion before we can move ahead with that approval.
So what you're saying is we need to talk about the COSA DC budget?
If that's the council's question.
Let's talk about the COSA DC budget.
Sure thing. Some information about the Development Corporation budget. In this last ballot, it was clear that the sales tax that's received, a portion of it will be available for economic development, and a portion of it will be available for ballot. And so that's how it's submitted in your budget ordinance and today, that there's really a ballot fund in the Development Corporation, which is available for specific community projects listed on the ballot. And that's what I have before you first. And then next, the Economic Development Fund. And so when we talk about Development Corporation, there's really two funds there. So what we're doing here is we're preparing... Presenting the fiscal year 13 current budget to the fiscal year 14 proposed budget. So in the ballot side, there is only one revenue source, which is sales tax. We're proposing $5.7 million for the ballot side. This is tied closely to the proposal for general fund revenue. The same methodology we use to estimate what kind of sales tax is going to come in, we utilize on the Development Corporation as well, so.
Morgan, could I add something here? Recall that that ballot split that sales tax amount into what, in the long term, will end up being a 28% versus a 72% split. The 72 being for all those ballot projects, the 28 being for economic development and admin-oriented activities. Recall that the ultimate goal was to get those ballot projects paid for and begin accumulating that money for future projects. And so that's where, when she talks about two different funds, one's economic development, one is ballot projects, the projects which were listed on the ballot.
Morgan, is it not half-cent sales tax?
It's the type B sales tax. In San Angelo, it's one-half percent of the 8.25% that's collected. So it falls under the law for type B sales tax. So the type B sales tax funds ballot and economic development initiatives.
Half-cent sales tax.
We can call it half-cent sales tax in San Angelo, yes, sir.
That's what I've always understood it as, so.
Doc, do you have a question, sir?
One of the things I'd like to bring up is we haven't really looked at the half-cent sales tax and its designations. One of the things that I would like for us to look at somewhere along the line is exactly what that goes to, exactly what the percentages are. What I'd like to look at is seeing if there's something that we can break out where we can have some perpetual monies going to perpetual needs. Water for parks, maintenance for parks, street improvement, the cemetery. Those sort of things that are our city's responsibility for years to come, where we have this income and where some of those things we can look at and hopefully move some monies around, take it back to the voters, see if they agree with us, and go from there.
Sure. And there are some perpetual things listed in there. And if it's your pleasure, we can skip into the line item detail now, if that's what you would like. That, for example, for the Affordable Housing Program, there is a perpetual amount that's set aside every year. Also, for parks maintenance, there's a perpetual amount that's set aside every year. Street maintenance, there's not a perpetual amount. But yes, there are some items already perpetual in their budget, and that's what's... And we can get into that detail if it's... Or if you just wanna give direction for more.
What I would prefer, because we have so many things and it's already so late, can we just put that on the agenda when we bring some of these other things forward, where we can all discuss them and have a little bit more time to review them before let's go on down the line with it as is now, and then look at that at a later date, if that's okay?
I don't have a problem. What'd you say, Daniel? Would that work? Anybody else have a problem with that?
No.
Sounds like the consensus, Doc.
All right.
So if you like, we have the ballot item there. We also have the Economic Development Fund and summary information there. So we can get into that later in the detail or whatever your pleasure is.
Mayor, did you interpret those comments as we're good with all of the Development Corporation as is or just the ballot side?
Well, I think there's gonna be some questions.
Okay.
I think there's gonna be quite a few questions. But I think what they're saying is, is let's move this... Because we still have to go back into executive session. We still have but... Where I... Is this our budget workshop, or do we have to do that as well?
No, we're going through all this.
Okay, we still have to go back into executive sessions. We're gonna be here another couple hours, anyway. I think what they're saying is, let's just move this to another meeting and discuss it all then, which means that we will approve this as it is presented, get this done so that we can satisfy state requirements, and then we'll worry about the rest of it at a later time. If we need to make budget amendments, we can do so.
Come back with a line item at a...
But there's gonna be some questions on COSA DC. Am I right, Winkie?
That's correct, sir.
I think that is assured.
Sure. Then that's what I have for you today. We have some future items coming up, but that's... That's to satisfy the state requirement, we just need that second hearing and adoption of the budget ordinance as presented.
Someone wants to make a motion in a second. We'll get this one taken care of.
I will move that we approve the budget as approved. Is that good enough?
As presented.
As presented.
And that is what we talked about last time. So it looks like everything we asked for is in the budget. So I'll second it. It looks good to me. Anyone? Any other comment from counsel?
Duane, before you go forward, I do have one question about... One of the primary concerns I heard that counsel addressed was how we should go forward and address watering, whether that is within the sports complex or the parks or this or that. And I don't think that's a component that y'all have addressed yet within this budget. So I just wanna make sure y'all are aware of that.
So that's something else we're gonna have to deal with.
Well, the key is, with you having built that rainy day fund into the budget, that is a potential funding source for some of these water issues.
So we put it in last week, and we're already spending it?
No.
That's a saving fund there.
It's kinda the way the budget works in my house.
The line item presentation you'll be making, is that going to be in two weeks? I mean, I think we are interested in hearing it right away. So if it's the next council meeting, is that when?
And that satisfies state law, does it not?
Sure, absolutely. Once we...
So the key is, if you were thinking that you might use that instead of setting that aside...
No, I'm not, sir.
We're not thinking.
No.
So we're... I guess I've got a question now. Are we... Are we going to address the water issue, or are we just going to forget the water issue?
Well, that just hit me. I didn't know anything about it until just a couple of minutes ago, so.
Well, it was something we had talked about before, and some other council members had talked specifically about watering, specifically with regard to preventing further loss of trees.
Well, that kinda ties into what I was saying. We have parks money for maintenance. Why can we not use that for watering and some of those sort of things? And excuse my ignorance, I just don't understand. And that's why I wanna talk about our half-cent sales tax and what can be used and not used for.
Well, the only reason I brought up a decision, a potential decision on that today was because, for example, a tax rate changed today. If you chose not to... If you chose instead of granting... If you chose not to grant the tax rate relief and use that money for watering, that's a decision you can't reverse next week.
I don't believe you're gonna... I don't believe you're gonna get any traction on getting away from that half-cent.
No, I didn't want you... I didn't want to allow you to get into a situation you couldn't back out of. That's my only concern. And if you're solid on that part of it, the rest of it, we can work on.
I think we need to work on it, because I don't believe anybody's ready to say, "We're not gonna give the half-cent back." Does anybody wanna give the half-cent back?
Yeah, we'll give it back.
Okay, we're giving it back. The half-cent stays, and that rainy day fund needs to stay. It needs to last more than a week.
Well, if we do it in two weeks, it'll be three weeks old.
Well, now that's different.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? A couple of quick comments on water. Yes, we did not address that, and we need to address it, and I'd be willing to address it in two weeks, as long as we keep on watering our trees. But I have some food for thought that I'm not asking for a decision on, but I've been studying this pretty hard, and I've got an idea that nobody will like, so I'll just throw it out. With respect to the water, for the Fairmount Cemetery and for the Parks Department, if we don't wanna find the money somewhere else, I think we could easily, on those two, agree just to not exempt those from the budget process, since it's a city watering itself, and kick the can down the road for one year on those. But we still do have the sports complex, which has a rather large water budget. And unless Mr. Morrison's agreeable to exempt that, then we're gonna have to find that money somewhere. So that's just food for thought for next meeting. And I really do like the idea of exempting those two organizations, city organizations, from accounting for the water for this coming fiscal year, because it's not all that much money. And I think we can count on the Parks Department to properly water the trees down there. If they don't, we can scold them or otherwise take action against them. And the same with the cemetery. So that's just food for thought.
I'd suggest you bring something back to us.
The only thing was, those irreversible type actions, a potential future action like that certainly is... Works, can work. And so I didn't want you to get into a situation you'd wanna change your mind next week, so.
I think this half-cent's gonna stay.
Okay.
I certainly want my rainy day fund to stay.
Then without further comment, I think we are ready.
What is that water budget for the sports complex?
$170,000, $184,000. And the trees... And the trees, it's $98,000, I think, if I remember right. For the... That's for the... Yeah, that's for the city parks.
It's about $14 short of the rainy day fund.
Yeah.
But that doesn't include anything for the Fairmount, and they had another $14,000 plugged in for that. But the Fairmount Cemetery...
There it all goes in.
We've got a good amount.
What a coincidence.
Well, the Fairmount Cemetery's losing trees like crazy, and they ran out of water in about April or May, water in their budget. So that's the benefit of having an exemption from them having to account for their tree watering.
And what is their budget?
This new budget plugs in $14,000 for water.
I thought it was 16, okay.
And we'll get the final number on the raises?
Ms. Marley, I think, was shooting to be prepared for this meeting, and she's probably prepared to make a presentation if you wanna see it.
That the final number was the $812,000. But if you want detail about how, you know, that you directed Ms. Marley to be creative and how to just make that work, I think she has some information to that effect.
Or you can put it in our Friday packet, too, for us to look at.
Y'all wanna listen to... Y'all want Lisa to make it, or you want to just get the packet?
No, the packet's fine.
You wanna listen to her? You wanna listen to her or put it in the packet?
Packet. Packet.
Packet. You're off the hook, Lisa. Put it in her packet, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any other comments from counsel? Public, this is your time to comment, if you have a comment on this. Motion has been made. The motion has been seconded as the second reading, that we approve it as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Seven oh on that one.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. You and I had a discussion a minute ago about what to do about the Fairmount Cemetery columbarium, and you had a discussion...
I think we need to deal with that now.
Oh, okay.
Let's deal with that now, as far as... We've got our budget approved. We planned on taking money out of the capital improvements funds. I think it was $316,000 to do the columbarium at the Fairmount... Fairmount. Fairmount Cemetery. Fairmount Cemetery. I guess this would be a real good time to go ahead and approve this, get this thing done.
Morgan, in your spreadsheet that you had pulled up, did it list that as a separate amount?
It listed it as a future item to be discussed when we allocate all of the capital dollars. So, cemetery improvements to be discussed.
The reason there's no amount there, Mayor, is there is included in the general fund, 1.75 million dollars for pay-as-you-go capital. That's cash in the budget to pay for capital. We have -- while we have not locked ourselves down, we have generally thought in terms of 250,000 of that going for a fire truck. And recall that we talked about three years of that 250 would give us two fire trucks. Staff's interpretation of last week's discussion was that this year, as we consider that, we've got two items in there, that while not -- while we haven't taken formal action on them, that we're thinking of those two items as coming right off the top of that 1.75. One was the fire truck. The second was 316,000, and I don't remember the exact number. There may have been -- it may be 316 and change, for cemetery improvements. And so, while we're thinking of that in that way, that full discussion hasn't occurred. And so, I'm not sure what the rules are on giving further action and whether or not we should take a vote. We're interpreting your direction last week as all the direction we need. But if you want to do more than that, we're open to that.
Motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the -- excuse me. I move to approve 316,000.
Second.
With the capital improvement fund for the first stage one of the columbarium.
Since we -- we've got to make sure that--
I think since the motion was made to adopt the ordinance, it would need that amendment to the motion. Because what's proposed is 1.756 for capital projects.
Why would it need to be an amendment? It's out of a different fund.
Because the budget ordinance includes all funds.
But it's taking it from the--
Could we use it for water, lady?
We can take it by consensus, correct?
Just pull that for watering.
They're grinning.
That means, yeah. Mayor, what was the motion again? I'm just making sure that we have this right.
Can we do this? Is this something that's legal? Can we make a separate motion?
She's saying that we can.
We can?
Discuss in the budget.
And I think you just made the motion -- you just made a motion. Are you moved that we pull 316,000 out of the capital improvement funds to finance the columbarium at Fairmount Cemetery?
Three-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, stage one. Yes, sir.
That was your motion.
Three-sixteen.
And Charlotte seconded. So, we do have a motion and a second.
Winkie, do you want to put a number in there, or do you want to just say that -- I mean, what happens if it goes -- if we put a number in there, it goes 320,000, then we got a problem?
Yeah, and what we make--
These ladies could raise money anywhere. They'll fund the excess.
Okay.
If you get 316, will you be satisfied? Let's give them -- if council will approve this, we'll do 316, and if it's more, we'll deal with that later. I've got a motion. I've got a second. Do we have any further council consideration on this? Talking -- looking at the public now. Do you have anything against 316,000 of capital money being spent for the columbarium at Fairmount Cemetery? This is the time to speak up.
Can you mount over that they'll raise?
That's what they say.
Is that what they're grinning about?
Yeah. I've got a motion. I've got a second to approve 316. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Put a seven oh on that one as well, Lisa. Now, what do we need to deal with?
That's it for item 11.
Okay. Let's go to item 12. First public hearing, consideration of introducing an ordinance, levying property taxes for the City of San Angelo for the 213 tax year, and ordinance fixing and levying ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the City of San Angelo, Texas for the 213, 214 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exceptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Ms. Morgan?
So, what's before you is the proposed tax rate of point seven seven six per hundred dollars valuation. As we've discussed, this is a one-half cent reduction from last year to this year. You may notice in the caption that the state measures the effective rate versus effective rate, not the proposed rate. And so, what that means is, we've hit some benchmark that the effective rate is lower than what we're proposing in maintenance and operations. So, even though the proposed rate is lower, the caption reads, as it does, that what the state would require us to do is to move that the property tax rate be effectively increased. The reason for that is because we paid off some debt in 2013. We intended to issue new debt in 2013. And this -- we went over to -- I mean, it's in your cover memo, but just to be super transparent, that we're not increasing the tax rate. It's just that the state requires that the -- since the effective benchmark of the effective rate was lower than what we propose the rate to be, they require this specific language. It's--
Morgan, the specific language which is on the screen, is that how you need the motion phrased?
That's correct.
Okay. Consideration that the city council moves that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.776 per 100 dollars, which is effectively a 4.75 percent increase in the tax rate. Is that the motion you need?
Yes, sir.
Anybody want to move that way?
Some moved.
Anybody want to second it?
Second.
Charlotte has made the motion. Don has seconded. Do I have any further public -- any further council comment on this? Public, it's your time. We've cut your taxes a half cent. Anyone want to speak to it? If not, all in favor of the tax rate of 77.6, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Put a seven oh on that one as well. Let's go to item number 17. We have discussed the rest of these.
Thank you.
A consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. Design and Historic Review Commission, Ashley Young Turner, that would be from SMD III, to an unexpired term of September 14. Planning Commission, John Young, this also is SMD III, to an unexpired term, January 15. Anyone want to move to approve these?
I'll move to approve those.
Anyone want to second that?
Those two names.
I got an approval. John Silva, so I've got Marty that has seconded. Further council consideration on this. Public consideration. If not, I call that these be approved as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Negative, nay. Put a seven oh on that one. Okay. We do have to go back into executive. We are not through. Announcements and considerations of future agenda items.
I have one.
Okay. And I have one as well.
I have one.
And Marty has one. And we do need to make the announcement that the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, October 15, 213, will be held at 5:30 PM in the evening. So, we are going to, August 15, we will be holding an evening meeting. So, everyone that wants -- huh?
Not August.
It says October. What'd I say? August?
It said August, yeah, but it's October.
I didn't mean August. October 15, we will have an evening meeting, 5:30. So, the October meeting will be held in the evening. Okay. Charlotte, what do you have for the agenda, please, ma'am?
I would like a committee to work between now and next year, to work with Lisa, Human Resource Director, on our review process and our meets or exceeds process, if that's all right. Myself, Lisa, and anybody else on council who'd like to sit in, and Mr. Valenzuela.
Anybody else want to sit in?
Don will sit in.
Don volunteers.
And if Lisa could coordinate the activities on that at her convenience.
Can you do that, ma'am?
Absolutely.
Okay. Marty, you had one?
Yes. I just want to, I guess, reiterate that we're going to see all the leases of all the property that we have, as far as recreational. And we're going to review those and get them up to standards.
I agree with you. Needs to be done. Who else has something for the agenda? Mr. Wardlaw?
You asked me, Mr. Mayor, to remind you about the pilot.
I got it. That's mine. I got it right here, sir. I would like, on the next agenda, to have some discussion and action. The pilot, the pilot program on the wastewater, that needs to disappear, and that is payment in lieu of taxes. And we thought we did away with this in '06, when we did away with the pilot on the water. But now, we need to do away with on the wastewater. So, if you could get that on the agenda for next meeting. Yes, sir.
Are we thinking about in one year, or maybe over two years, or some other term?
Now, let them bring something to us, and we can discuss that and make that decision at that time.
Okay.
I like doing one year, but--
I agree.
But we may need to -- we may need to negotiate. That just about concludes our agenda. We do need to go back into executive. We're not through. We've got one item we still need to discuss there. And when we come back, Johnny?
I just wanted -- Lisa Marley had a question. I just wanted clarity on the firefighter's compression amount that we talked about, and the meeting confer amount has nothing to do with the eight-hundred-thousand dollar salary increase.
No.
Those are three different--
Separate but -- three different banks.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
You're wise beyond your years.
Yes, you are.
Thank you so much.
So, at this time, we will go back into executive. And when we get through with the executive, if there is anything to declare, I will declare it when we come back. So, this is -- it's 3:05. Ms. Ramirez, and we are going back into executive. Call back to order. We have gone through the executive meeting. There is nothing to report at this time. There will be an item on the next agenda where it will be fully discussed and fully vetted, the things that we need to talk about. But there is nothing to report at this time. And now, if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn--
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Let's go. Meeting is over at 4:00.